Good morning. I'd like you to welcome, welcome everyone to today's public hearing. If anyone present is planning on presenting testimony, please sign up at the sheet in the back of the hearing room. Today is Wednesday, the 4th of January. Time is 10 o'clock set for this public hearing. Commissioner Davidson and I are present here in the building and Commissioner Kenyon is online. Are there any changes to the agenda, Mad Clerk?
No, there are not.
No changes? Okay. I'll ask for a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, so we have before us now, application number 202102816. Appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of a conditional use permit for a commercial cell tower. The property is located at 5410 West Beacon Light Road, contains 5.35 acres in the rural transition district. Okay, we will first have our, our staff report.
Thank you Chairman Commissioners. I will present, we are working to get the consultant here to also speak to you and unfortunately, WebEx is giving us some fits right now, but I'll start with my presentation and hopefully we can resolve that by the time I'm done and then he can answer questions that you might have about his most recent report. But, so yeah, to your point Chairman, this is an appeal of a commercial cell tower, of Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of a commercial cell tower. The appellant is Louis V. Spiker of Johnson May Law, who was hired by Mr. Brad Bentley and Mr. Brad Bentley is here to represent himself now, so just some clarification as to the name listed here and who's actually here to speak to you. And the original applicant is Josh Leonard of Clark Oral LLP. So, the subject property is a 5.35 acre parcel located at 5410 West Beacon Light Road in the rural urban transition district. On the subject property is an existing single-family residence and multiple detached accessory buildings. It's highlighted here in red. The project includes a 100-foot commercial cell tower? Sorry, let me turn on the TV here.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Are you, I hope you're seeing the presentation on your screens.
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, here we go. So, again, the project includes a 100-foot commercial cell tower with capacity up to four individual carriers to co-locate. Also included in the project is a 2,500 square foot ground lease area for associated equipment, which would be screened with a minimum six-foot solid fence per Ada County code. So, the next couple of slides detail the history of the project and the several public hearings that we've been through. Originally, this was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on March 10th of 2022. It was then appealed by Mr. Brad Bentley within the timeframe on March 25th of 2022. We scheduled this with you originally for June 1st, but then tabled it to July. This was then again tabled by the board at the July 13th hearing to September 14th. And you request the following information. So, I'll read through those. The applicant shall further research to provide information regarding locating the proposed cell tower on Bureau of Land Management property approximately 1.25 miles away or properties closer to Highway 16. Development Services staff shall hire a third-party consultant to review the applicant, application materials submitted for the project to verify it will resolve a gap in coverage as required by our code. Development Services staff shall provide a map of all cell towers and carriers as well as all existing and proposed housing within a 10-mile radius. You did reduce that down to five miles because 10 miles is pretty much the entire valley, so. Ada County Legal shall research the Telecommunications Act of 1996 to determine how wireless broadband is regulated, particularly as it relates to requirements associated with determining and resolving gaps in coverage. This matter was discussed with you during an executive session with legal staff. And, the appellant shall provide proof of diminished land values in the surrounding area resulting from the proposed cell tower. And then finally, Development Services staff shall research the City of Eagles reasoning for recommending denial of the proposed cell tower. So, at our last hearing on this, we walked through all of those things. I'm happy to rehash some of that. We do have Ron Valdez, the consultant here, to speak to his report, but let me continue with the project history because it didn't stop there. So, this was then remanded back to the P&amp;Z by the board at that September 14th hearing with the request that our consultant review all additional information that had been entered into the record. As you recall, there was some additional drive test data and other items like that that you, you felt our P&amp;Z needed to consider and figure out if their original approval was still okay. So, this was tabled by the P&amp;Z on October 13th to allow the third-party consultant to review additional information that was entered into the original application prior to and at the September 14th board hearing. It should be noted that the third-party consultant did review all additional information provided by the original applicant following that September board hearing and prior to the October 13th P&amp;Z hearing. Of particular note was an additional memo from Josh Leonard of the original applicant team, which is included in your packet. And so, as a result of that, we did have a updated review from Ron Valdez at the P&amp;Z hearing and then an updated memo to you, which is the first item in your packet. But ultimately, the P&amp;Z voted on November 17th to, of a vote four to three, to recommend approval of the appeal, which thus overturned their original approval of the commercial cell tower. So, the motion I brought before you is P&amp;Z's recommendation, which again is to approve the appeal and overturn P&amp;Z's original decision to approve the cell tower. They made their decision based on these two conclusions of law, that it does not comply with the specific use standards for commercial cell towers specifically as it addresses gaps in coverage and other items like that, and that it does not comply with the required findings for conditional uses. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions and we'll see if Mr. Valdez is available to speak to you about his most recent review.
Okay, are there any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, maybe you could summarize some of the points that were kind of remanded back to staff, that you showed the bullet points there and some of the actions that were taken pursuant to them.
Sure, yeah, well, we'll start with, I guess, item number one and the information that you wanted additional, you wanted us and the consultant to look into. Josh Leonard has provided the analysis of the BLM property that was also covered in the Ron Valdez review. I'll probably let both of them speak to the conclusions there. The third-party consultant, we've obviously hired and we re-hired for a second phase of that contract to review that additional information. And again, the most recent version of his memo is in your packet. I, I really would prefer him to speak to his own memo. I think that's going to be way better than me paraphrasing someone who's an engineer and more well-versed in cell towers than I am. We did provide you the information on the housing and developments in the area and as can be shown, there's a lot of growth occurring in the valley and the, and the portion of the valley that this project is proposed to be located. And so, you know, as a result, demand will probably continue to be there. Again, this is something that Mr. Valdez will speak to when hopefully we get him in. And then, the diminished land values, I'm going to skip over the legal one because again, that's just subject to you and Legal's conversation. The appellant did provide an assessor's report, which they can speak to during their testimony as to the impact of a cell tower on a property in the area, not directly their properties, but I believe another property in close proximity. And then finally, City of Eagles reasoning for recommending denial. As we previously discussed, they found that the tower would not comply with their code in the event that they annexed it. They don't allow cell towers in residential districts and they don't allow them of the height requested by the applicant. So, for those reasons, they recommended denial. They did say if we were going to approve it, that City of Eagle would prefer a stealth design, probably a mono pine or something along those lines. So, we've had lots of discussions about stealth options for this tower and that's certainly something that you can discuss in greater detail with the applicant. Yeah, beyond all of that, again, I, I think there's been a lot of memos, a lot of information back and forth. I, I really do think that first memo in the packet is the best, when you have the most up-to-date, that includes all of the information. The, the drive test data that Mr. Leonard provided, Ron Valdez's ability to review kind of all of that information, as well as all the testimony heard at the hearing. So, with that, I, I can answer more specific questions if you'd like.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions of our staff? Commissioner Kenyon, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So, as a part of the applicant team, I'd love to have Ron speak to you. I'm not sure he's in yet. I know that we've called Commissioner Kenyon on our phone here. We probably can't call another person on that phone. We might be able to call him over WebEx. If you have a moment, we'd like to.
All right.
Try to work through this, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I did want to apologize to everybody for having to table this after the last public hearing ran very long, so I know a lot of you were here at that one, both sides, and were very gracious with us to allow us to reschedule it. And I know this has been a long process and appreciate everybody coming back and being able to work with us. We really didn't anticipate the RV hearing from the last meeting going as long as it did, but again, thank you for, for your patience with us.
Well, Commissioners, in the, in the interest of keeping the hearing moving forward, you know, we can continue to try to reach Ron if you'd like to take testimony. From other individuals, there's a rebuttal that is offered to both sides, so any, any information shared, even if it's not right this minute, people will get a chance to address. So, I will continue trying to reach Mr. Valdez.
All right, well, we'll, we'll start off by hearing 15 minutes from the applicant and then 15 minutes from the opposition. So, the applicant would like to come forward.
If you don't mind, the appellant going first.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, thank you and Commissioner Davidson, appreciate your accommodating this morning. I, I think we learned a lot about affordable housing and RVs and some of us are thinking about starting some businesses around that. And Commissioner Kenyon, thank, thank you for joining. I know you went out with a bang with a, a long evening, but to join remotely is, is very meaningful for us. You've been a big part of this journey and this process, so I just want to thank the Commissioners for the process you guys have established. So, Leon, if you could bring up my slides. As I start, just as a way of introduction, my name is Brad Bentley. I live at 4176 West Morgan Creek Court in Eagle. I'm building a new home, which I'll show you, which is right adjacent to where this cell tower is being proposed. I'm actually pro-infrastructure and telecommunications. I was actually Senior Executive Vice President at AT&amp;T, reporting directly to the CEO for four years. Spent 20 years at DirecTV and Satellite Communications in terms of satellite television and broadband. And so, I'm pro, I'm pro-infrastructure, but I'm also pro trying to do it in a very thoughtful way and a design that, that benefits the community. And what I want to walk through today is, I don't think that's what's before us, and so I want to walk through that level of information. So, again, thank you for, for hearing us out and we have many neighbors here that would like to speak as well. One thing I can commit, there will be no one on the other side in favor of the cell tower, unlike the last one where there was 50 people on both sides. You've got all these neighbors in opposition, but no one is here citing that they think we need more towers and explain why, because we don't have a gap in coverage. If you can go to the next slide. For all this timeline, Leon, I appreciate you walking through the journey. This would be our sixth hearing if you count that last one. We, we got tabled on the 14th, so we're here today on January 4th to go through this. But what, the other reason I wanted to share this is just the, the thoughtfulness of, of this commission willing to get a third-party consultant, not just for one round, but as Leon touched, for two rounds. And if you recall, Commissioner Kenyon, you know, some information was running in the 11th hour, and at that time, this commission was, this Kenyon, Commissioner Kenyon was in favor of approving this appeal, but then I think you guys caucused and said, you know what, with all the new information, let's send it back down to the P&amp;Z. Let's give them a chance to weigh in based on all the new information. And so, that was two full analysis from Val Technologies, which is Mr. Ron Valdez's consulting firm. And so, I want to walk through that data and kind of where, where, what has brought us to this moment. Next slide. This is what's on the table. 100-foot tower right here in our residential community. This picture is from the porch of Thomas and Jordan's front yard. This is also Good Life Farms, a business that not only we have diminished property values, but a small business is impacted by where this tower is going. It's been positioned as it will blend in. It does not blend in. And this isn't just about the neighbors that are here within this footprint, but this is Beacon Light, in which we have thousands of residents that drive through this area every single day that are impacted by this unsightly tower. Now, I'm pro-communication, the question is, do we need the tower? And if we do, is this the right location? And that's the piece that I'd like to walk through. Next slide. This is my son and I in a hot air balloon here in September, or August of 21, and I just used this bird's eye view for two reasons. One, this is very rural area, as you guys know. You can see in the bottom beacon light, it's highlighted on the vertical and to the right, you can see, if you guys can see this, okay. This thing doesn't work on the screen, but Linder is right there, right? And so, everyone represented here, the Millers, the Dustin's, the Deckers, the Velos, Barbies, all those neighbors are here today, as well as a few neighbors on the other side that are part of Homestead. But this is a very rural area. What's in red, as you see, I don't know if you can see that red dot right above the word beacon light, the B, that's where the proposed cell tower is going, or is proposed to go. Next slide. When this first came up, it was clear in the P&amp;Z, which is, you know, even the applicant said, we'd like to have this further west, meaning this isn't where we actually need the tower, but this was the only place that they could get someone who was willing to accept it. And that process was very light, as the P&amp;Z pointed out. They sent out a few letters. This is the only one that responded. Not a lot of diligence in terms of looking at BLM land and others. The Commissioner Ralph said, I have reservations of what is the true necessity of this application. Commissioner Wickstrom, there's not a lot of improved coverage to the west. It's all in the north where no one lives. That's why I showed you the photo. That's BLM land that's north of us. And the applicant's response, well, it's better to have something than nothing. The watch out there is, that's not how I think we need to plan our infrastructure as a county. And then the last, these are all videos that you could go back to, but looking to have an additional tower further west out by 16, which would be redundant it seems, meaning, you know, that's where a lot of development and density is occurring, that this is not the right location of the tower. Next slide. So, as you guys know better than me, and we have our eternity here, so she can keep us all honest, but there are two requirements to lean on the federal, the Telecommunications Act. One is, you have to prove that there's a significant gap in coverage. Second is that, that this is the least intrusive means of providing that coverage. What I want to show you next is proof that there is no gap in coverage and the beauty of this next slide is it's not my slide, but it's actually the slide from the applicant. And it's, only exists because of this commission's diligence in making sure that we get the right data to make an informed decision. Because of the work that this commission did and Ron Valdez, we have the following slide that shows with or without the cell tower. If you recall, this is because there's a silo tower being removed due to development. It's a 60-foot tower that only has Verizon. And what the commission, or what the applicant implied, that if we remove that tower, you're no longer going to be able to make cell calls. You can't call 911. If you're driving through the area, you may drop a call. And so, what was really important to know is, well, what happens to coverage when that tower goes down? Well, in, in, I guess, appreciate this commission, the applicant actually did the work and worked with Verizon to take that tower down. And we have the data now. Let's go to the next slide. Again, this is their data. On the top right, in the green, that's the drive study with the tower, and at the bottom right is without the tower. Now, this is specifically for 751 megahertz frequency. Now, you'll hear later from the applicant that the higher frequencies are not as adequate, but 751 gives you the ability to have coverage, to make a call, to make a text and have some broadband. The higher frequencies, as I'll show in a few slides, is about getting more faster data, more streaming data, but in terms of coverage, which is what's protected by the Telecommunications Act, there's plenty of coverage the moment that tower goes down. The notion that you can't make a 911 call is not true. The notion that as you're driving through this area, you'll drop a call is not true because cellular is able to move frequencies up and down. There is coverage with and without that tower. And the engineer, Mr. Kenny, who's in the audience here, even said in the hearing, we're not going to see a significant difference in 751. Now, you will see there is difference in the higher frequency, but that is not what's protected by the Telecommunications Act. We go to the next slide. Prior case law, well, and just to highlight, I guess, this, this is what it off. The drive study is green everywhere. What I've circled is where the existing Verizon sites are. So, you can see in the bottom, there in the right, in the top right. Where I think we'll ultimately need coverage, I'll show it in a few slides, is closer to 16, where we're going to have a lot more density and a lot more throughput as we wind that road and as there's more dense commercial and residential communities. Next slide. Prior case law, I underlined this, the Telecommunications Act does not protect improved capacity and speed of service. And it was undisputed in this case that the signal strength was provided, was desired enough to make a phone call, which is all that's protected by the Telecommunications Act. Next slide. Next slide. This is just something I pulled off the Internet. You can get this, but just to give us perspective, the far right in purple is a 700 megahertz. The reason I show this is that's what gives you coverage at the top. You know, it's a longer range, it's better for building coverage, it is slower speeds, but it's perfectly fine for calls, texts, and some browsing. What you need the higher frequencies for is to penetrate buildings and for faster speeds. And so, but that is what is not protected by the Telecommunication Act. And by the way, we, as homeowners, all of us have high-speed broadband in our houses, so we're not in need of the additional, and that's what everyone's here to testify. In that chart, you only have 50-some on homes. You have probably 10%, 15% of that residential body sitting in the room here. At my house, where we developed, we have fiber, both from Sparklight as well as Century Link, is we have two fiber options, so we have plenty of in-home density for high streaming through our home. Next slide. This is probably where I think we would need additional capacity at some point, circled where there's higher density going out in 16, because you can see where the Verizon towers are, but it's not where the proposed site, I don't know if you can see in green, existing and proposed, but it's too far east. It's not to the west where all the density. And again, that's just because it's the best site that they could come up with at the time. Next slide. So in this case, the court explicitly noted that improved capacity and speed, although desirable and no doubt profitable, goals of the age of smartphones, they are not protected by the Telecommunication Act. The second far-reaching determination made by the federal court in this Flower Hill is that the court ruled that the carrier cannot establish a significant gap in coverage of its wireless service simply by claiming that it has a gap in one of the multiple frequencies through which it provides its wireless service. Again, just stating, as long as there's coverage, there's coverage. They don't have a right to telecommunication, have every single frequency that they would like and prefer. Next slide. The second substantial evidence is least intrusive means. They did not explore the BLM land as an alternative. That process is not a letter, but an application that was never applied for, nor is there any analysis that they provided that that space would not work. That was a big part of the P&amp;Z overturning of this, is that there wasn't proper diligence on using BLM land as a potential site for this. All we heard through the processes, it won't work, but we have no data on it, nor was an application ever filed. Next slide. For perspective, you can see the existing site, the proposed site, and where BLM land is. It's basically the same distance where the proposed site is that they're looking to put it. And where I've circled is probably where we need more coverage, which is further to the east, which was also validated by the own applicant. Next slide. Ron Valdez's first analysis, this is his words, not mine, so I just cut and pasted, but we'll read the highlighted. It says, "After reviewing the position of the applicant and the appellant, I believe it comes down to a lack of strong evidence on why the new cell tower is required. Collecting signal levels at various points in the area does not provide enough information about the overall wireless environment. A comprehensive drive test is needed." In the second analysis, we did that, and I'll read his findings. He also noted Verizon could add even bigger need for coverage west of Eagle, which I pointed out. Next slide. Now, we did a second analysis, and thanks to Commissioner Kenyon, who, after reading all the citing of lack of data, lack of data, and pushed this down to the P&amp;Z, there was a second analysis done, and that's why that meeting took a month to get together, and this is the second analysis from Valdez, or from Val Technologies. "The focus of the applicant was to demonstrate the impact of how losing the silo would affect the surrounding areas where civilians or citizens live and commute. Again, these were not continuous sample points along designed routes, but were fixed tests in various locations. Because of the limited number of samples over a given area, there's a wide variety of variability of uncertainty in other areas where testing was not concluded." Again, in yellow, highlighted, "However, more comprehensive testing is required to obtain a complete view of the environment." And then the last point, "BLM Site 3 could be a valid candidate." That was his second analysis, and in my mind, the last analysis, because if you, timeline states, this was after we pushed the P&amp;Z, this is the analysis that was prepared, that we sent to the P&amp;Z to rule on. There was a third one, which I don't know exactly who commissioned it, but seems to contradict the first two. And I bring the first two up just so you can read the verbatims of what was said by Mr. Valdez. Hopefully Leon can get him on later, but it seems to reverse some of his positions. But in fairness to Mr. Valdez, you know, he hasn't been to the site, he doesn't know how rural it is. And second thing, I don't think he understands where there's some alternative locations that would be better. But just wanted to point out, after two full analysis, this was his conclusions, and I'm not taking my parts, I'm just reading what was written. Next slide. Substantial evidence. Substantial evidence, as you guys know, is relevant evidence as a reasonable mind might accept as adequate to support the conclusion. In a prior case, the court finds that if even one reason given for denial is supported by substantial evidence, the decision by the local zoning body cannot be disturbed. In this case, there's not just one, but there's multiple. So I'll go to my last slide, I think I have a minute left. Conclusion, substantial evidence has been provided that there is no gap in coverage. The beauty of this is not my data, it's their data. Number two, the applicant provided no evidence they performed proper diligence in least intrusive means. I'm specifically referring to the BLM as an opportunity to put this that would be less disruptive. The third is, we've put on the record a third-party appraisal that was done in Eagle, just down the street, that a cell tower can have an impact of 9.91%. You can review that, but it's on record and in the file, and I think Steve Barbie may be touching on it. The fourth is, the city has requested a 4-0 that Ada County deny the tower. And then the last point is, after reviewing 650 pages of documents, fifth trial, the P&amp;Z, as you guys push it back down, reversed their initial decision. And they did so citing the following things. "They still have coverage in those areas by Commissioner Wickstrom. There's not adequate consideration for BLM from Commissioner Birch. There is an adverse impact on property values, and it harms citizens." You'll hear from Jordan and her Good Life Farms, the study that she's done on the impact of her farm. "This is not the right place for the tower, Commissioner Birch. This is, this is the only site works," should have been in quotes, "does not support the applicant's comments." You'll hear it many times, and even Valdez, there's not enough proper work on that this is the best site. "The adverse effect of the Miller's Farm operations failed to go through exhaustive search for best location for passive, just sending out passive letters." And then the last one was agreeing with the City of Eagle and our residents to deny. So thank you for the time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Davidson, do you have any questions?
Not at the moment.
Mr. Kenyon, you have any questions?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay. Go ahead. You have 15 minutes.
Thank you very much.
Was our consultant able to hear? Is he on the line? So he'll, he's been able to hear the testimony, so I'm kind of...
Thank you, Commissioners. My name's Josh Leonard. My address is 251 East Front Street, Suite 310 here in Boise. I'm here with Stephen Kennedy of the Wabcoast Consultants, and he is here as an expert on radio frequency. He was hired by the applicant. We represent the applicant, Intermax Towers. I appreciate Commissioner Davidson, you earlier talking about the long journey that we've been on here. We were calculating, we figured out, as we were preparing today's presentation, that we filed our application one year, two months, and 11 days ago. It's been a journey, and it's evolved over time a little bit. We're going to bounce back and forth a little bit as we go through and present our presentation. Commissioner Davidson, I'm also grateful that you asked about the county's expert being online and able to hear. I'd look forward to his comments on Mr. Bentley's comments earlier, too.
Next slide, please. Steve Kennedy, 11142 Northwest 165th Drive, Suite 343, Surprise, Arizona. So, as everybody knows, Mr. Val had a report that was prepared in November, based upon the drive test data that I provided. One thing to note is, the Planning and Zoning Commission did not have this latest report when that was made, so they did not utilize that for the November 17th public hearing. So although you provided the updated drive testing analysis well before the deadline, staff did not pass that along to you. So the key thing is, Mr. Val provided expert testimony, and it happens to coincide with the applicant. Next slide. These are directly from Mr. Valdez's report. "I don't see any other viable option other than Beacon Light Road. The Beacon Light Tower is the best option for the community as a whole. Application doesn't just meet the standards and required for Ada County Court. According to the county's own expert, there's no other viable option, and our proposed site is the best option." Next slide. "The applicant has certainly gone above the requirements to show the impact of how losing existing silo site will negatively impact Verizon service. A thing to note, there was discussion that only phone calls, where I'm on a phone, I dial the digits, I get to a phone number on the public switch telephone network, that that only happens in 700 megahertz. It doesn't. Calls, phone calls, 911 happen in all frequency bands. So the frequency bands are not allocated, some for broadband, some for phone calls. They all do both. It's just the way it is. So whether it's 700, 850, 1900, 2100, 2500, 3800 megahertz, 3500 megahertz, they all make phone calls. So it is a cell phone site across all spectrum bands." So the applicant has certainly gone above and beyond requirements to show the impact of how losing existing silo will negatively impact service. When we talk about applicant in green, we mean the original applicant, Intermax Towers. When we talk about the appellant, that's the people opposed to the application. Next slide.
And that's, as we go through, if you can go back to that last slide, what we've done is we've color-coded it, so the green is applicant, that's us, the original applicant, and red being the other side, just so that we can differentiate, because it gets confusing as we're going through it. I'd first like to, before jumping into this slide, I'd like to note that Mr. Bentley only quoted from the first couple of reports by the county's expert. He didn't quote from the most recent one with the most up-to-date information, and I think that's very telling. We're quoting throughout this, every time you see a quote, that's from the most recent updated report by the county's expert. I'd also note that what happened is, he didn't have our information prior to the November 17th hearing, and it was through no fault of our own or no fault of staff's. It's that staff didn't produce a new staff report to go with that, because we've been here a few times, and so they didn't provide the updated information that was already in the record to Mr. Valdez. He didn't review it, but he did testify about it at the last hearing, and then he promised during the last hearing during his testimony to produce a new report, and that's what we're quoting from, which includes the most up-to-date information. This is the existing site. This is the silo we're talking about. If you look closely, you can see the AT&amp;T antennas at the top, or excuse me, Verizon antennas at the top. Using those antennas, Verizon currently has satisfactory coverage. It's just that this is going away. As you can tell, it's not long for this world. It's not in the greatest of shape. Also, the lease has expired, and it's a month-to-month, which the landlord can demand that they move their, remove their antennas with only 30 days' notice. When Mr. Bentley says that we don't have a gap in coverage in this area, that's because these are in operation right now. It's the gap that's created when these go away that we need to fill. Next slide. In his first report, the county's expert recommended requiring additional coverage data and information from the applicant. In this most recent updated report, Mr. Valdez acknowledged that we provided that information. He said, "The applicant provided the information needed to show the coverage hole created by losing the silo site and not building the Beacon Light Road site." I think that's important. From an independent third-party consultant and expert hired by the county, he's telling you that we have proven a gap that will result. He also, in his latest report, mentions that the other carriers have as big a need as Verizon will have, and that the other carrier's need is current. We'll talk a little bit later about the other carriers. This site will be fully leased up almost from day one. The other carriers are very anxious about putting, and very interested in putting antennas on this site.
Okay, next slide. So the applicant's maps have been proven to show a realistic view of expected coverage. So this is once again from Mr. Valdez's report. Next slide. "The appellant attempted to provide their own technical justification by third-party sources, which has proven to be inaccurate and show the lack of industry experience for valid technical input." So from your own consultant, he said the appellant's data doesn't stand. Next slide. All right, so BLM properties. Lots of talk about BLM properties. So the towers are too far away for Verizon, certainly too far away for carriers like T-Mobile, which do not utilize the lower-band spectrum for coverage. So right now, Verizon customers, yeah, all the customers that live in the area around have great service. It's Verizon sites live, it's on air, it's working. It's right in the middle of where all the customers are, just like when you have to run electrical or gas or anything to houses, it's part of the infrastructure. So we analyze the BLM property, but once again, it's too far away. Mr. Bentley talked about Highway 16 needing a site over there. There's an SBA tower already there, and it has both T-Mobile and AT&amp;T on it. And we still have the issues to the east where the existing Verizon tower sits. Once again, that goes away, the new site, proposed site possibly comes in, all three carriers get better. So an existing tower on Highway 16 does not provide the service on the western side. Well, do you want two towers or what? This site will help resolve that. Next slide. All right. "So the BLM site locations are not optimal, providing 5G and 4G and 5G service to existing areas. We can get all excited about 4G, 5G, all that other fun stuff. The simple fact is, phone calls, where I dial the public switch telephone network and I connect to a phone, or I dial 911 and I connect to a PSAP, all spectrum bands do that. The carriers do it across all bands. That's the way LTE technology works." Next slide.
Okay, could you identify yourself again, so that when you switch off back and forth, we can have, we know who's giving it for the record?
Josh, this is Josh Leonard. And the county's consultant in that latest report also noted some of the concerns that have been raised by the opponents. He said, "With regard to the alleged health risk with alleged impact on property values and alleged loss of business revenue," he said, "and there has been no factual data presented by the appellant to justify any of these claims." Again, that's not us saying that. That's the third-party independent consultant saying that they have not proven this. Concerns are not evidence. And again, the Planning and Zoning Commission, when they recommended approval of the appeal, didn't have this latest report, through no fault of their own, but they didn't have this most updated report with these strong recommendations. One thing I also want to mention, we've heard a lot of testimony over the past year or so from opponents who say they live near the site. At the November 17th hearing, there were several people who testified they lived near the site. In fact, only one person who lives within 1,000 feet of the tower testified. Mr. Bentley today testified that he lives immediately adjacent to the site. He lives 2,200 feet away, more, almost a half-mile, more than a third of a mile away. We would recommend you asking them to identify exactly how far, not by estimating the distance, but by showing on a map where they live, so you can see how far they are from this site. Mr. Bentley's concern with this site is that the entrance to his 10-acre lot development is near the site, not that his home is. Next slide. This is a little bit of self-congratulations, or not self-congratulations, it's us patting ourselves on the back using the consultant's words. We appreciate that he noted this. He said that when we came in with our application, we did a good job limiting the height of the tower. He also said that it shows the applicant is doing all they can to compromise with the local community. From its earliest planning stages, this tower, the carriers wanted 125 feet and even 150 feet. The tower company said, "We're not going to go into this community with 125-foot or 150-foot tower. We're going to put it at 100 feet, because that's what is absolutely minimal, that's the lowest height that we can do and make it work." And we came with that as a proposal. But that's why when the applicants say, "Why can't you put it lower?", we can't. We came in with the minimum, and as your consultant recognized, this is the minimum, and it's all we can do to compromise with this community. all we can do to compromise with this community. Next slide. This is an elevation slide, you've seen this, we've been here. This is just to show what it would look like when built. We'd note on page three of the updated report, the consultant recognizes that a taller tower would allow the carriers to provide better coverage, but we're, again, only asking for a 100-foot. And while this slide is helpful, it doesn't provide context. If we go to the next slide. On the left is a photo that captures the view looking west down Beacon Light Road, past the proposed tower, which in this view is going to be on the right in that field. You can see up above the arrow pointing to where the, the green X is where I was standing when I took the photo, the arrow is the direction I'm looking, and the green box is the site. This is the view. If you look at this, I'm going to point something out that I just noticed as we were sitting here in the room. This right here, for context, that camper is a fifth-wheel camper with its sides out. Look how small that is next to those existing towers. Those existing towers along the south side are 76 feet tall. We are immediately adjacent to Beacon Light Road and we are only 24 feet higher than that entire row of towers that run by there. So when Mr. Bentley mentions that the visual impact on drivers through this community will be great, they already see this. It's infrastructure. It's necessary. It's what's important to make sure that we can continue to have the information and data services and telephone services we need. Next slide. This is looking the other way. This is looking east, as you can see, from the road that goes up to Mr. Bentley's development. You can see there, same towers, this time they're on the right-hand side of the frame, on the south side of Beacon, but also the ones that are adjacent to the road on the north of Beacon. Next slide. Again, quoting the county's expert. "The opportunity to build less towers by building just a single location is more favorable." And his quote was, "It becomes highly beneficial to all parties involved." In this case, that's what we're proposing, a single location with all of the major carriers. Next slide. In addition to Intermax networks, which will be on the tower, we also have the co-location application on the left from Verizon, the formal letter of interest from AT&amp;T, and the letter of interest from T-Mobile's site acquisition specialist, all saying they would like to locate on this tower. And we've answered several emails and calls after each of these hearings and after each of these dates, as they inquire about the status and want to know where we're at. Next slide. This is just a depiction. On the left is our sites with four carriers, or what it would look like if we had to put four single-carrier towers around the area. Next slide. Again, the county's own consultant. "I don't see any other viable option other than Beacon Light Road." Mr. Bentley put a slide up showing the two elements that we need to meet in order to have a tower under the Communications Act, the Federal Communications Act. Hopefully it doesn't get that far with a lawsuit in federal court. If we get there, the two elements are gap in coverage, significant gap in coverage, and least intrusive means to fill that gap. The consultant has said, "We've proven that there will be a gap in coverage and we have proven that it's not just the least intrusive, it's the only viable option." By doing that, your consultant has made this decision easy, but he's also made it, in a way, difficult. And he's made it so that if this is not approved and we end up in federal court, your own, the county's own independent consultant has said, "The applicant meets those two qualifications, those two standards that are requisite for having a court order this tower to go in place." And again, we don't want it to go that far. We believe we meet all of the requirements, next slide, from the county code and that, as the consultant said, the Beacon Light Tower is the best option for the community as a whole. We would stand for questions.
All right, are there any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could you touch on, maybe from a legal perspective, the difference between gap in coverage and significant gap in coverage and why you feel you have a significant gap versus just a gap?
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And I'm going to leave the legal advice to your attorneys. I will tell you, from a practical standpoint, the fact that we have a site there now that's going to be going offline and creating a void, it takes it from being a gap in coverage that exists when there are existing towers that will stay there that will be touching and there's overlapping coverage, to being a significant gap in coverage. And as quoted by, or quoting the latest report from the consultant, we've demonstrated that significant gap.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So another question, do you have any idea what an additional cost to your client would be if they tried to do the, I guess, make the pole look like a Christmas tree or whatever kind of, you know, way to hide that?
And I can tell you, Commissioner Davidson, it is a significant cost. I can also tell you that if this board says, "As a condition of approval, you're required to," what do they call it, stealth, camouflage it, as a 100-foot-tall conifer or pine, my clients would agree with that and agree to do that.
Then another question about the height. I guess I'm wondering, you know, 100-foot tower versus 125. I mean, obviously the higher the tower, the further the signal goes, correct?
Generally speaking, yeah, that's a fair statement.
I mean, would a higher tower prevent the need for more additional towers close by? Or how much does that play in?
Steve, it depends.
If you could identify yourself, if this has to be transcribed, we need to know this topic.
I just did.
He said this is...
This is Steve Kennedy. So you have coverage issues within northwestern Ada County right now. It's to the northeast, to the northwest. When I was drive testing, I'd have a lot of people pull up and say, "What are you doing out here?" Checking out things. And I'd say, "I'm doing a coverage analysis, we're trying to get a tower approved." "Oh, great, coverage sucks up here." Okay, so there's problems in northwestern Ada County. You have areas where there is no coverage. So when we say that you're going to decrease or have a significant gap in coverage, it's going to be worse because the Verizon site will go out of service. It's not an if, it's a when.
As far as height, you probably saw Steve was shaking his head no that it wouldn't matter and I was shaking my head yes, that it would matter if it were higher. That's because the answer is yes and no. It provides a better signal, or a further signal, and reaches areas outlined, but it doesn't change the fact that they may need additional capacity sites for the number of users as it grows out in that area. So the answer is yes, a better signal further, but no, they still may need capacity sites to account for new users.
So, question for Josh. As far as the other potential clients going onto the tower, do you think that they would also have to provide evidence of significant gap in coverage to be approved to be on that tower? Or does our finding here, would that apply to the other carriers as well?
My position, and again, this is Josh Leonard, my position is that they wouldn't have to demonstrate additional because they don't have the need, a co-location application doesn't require a conditional use permit. With that said, based on the county's consultant's findings, they all have a significant gap in coverage. And I'm not going to put words in his mouth, but it seemed from the, even the earlier reports, that he was somewhat surprised that it was Verizon asking for this site until it was recognized that obviously Verizon's site, existing site, is coming down. Because the other carriers need the coverage at least as much, if not more, than Verizon in this area.
And has the interest of the carriers, I mean, I believe at our last meeting, you know, we might have discussed whether their interest was just anything more solid than, you know, kind of vague promises. Have there been additional communications with them to maybe firm up their desire to be placed on there?
Very much so. In fact, the written lease is being passed back and forth right now between me and Verizon for their, to bind them to their tower site. The AT&amp;T is involved in lease negotiations as well. To be candid, T-Mobile has backed off on a few sites around the area. I think financial purposes as opposed to needs, I think they're just recalibrating. With that said though, they still have inquired even recently about the status of this site and whether and when it will be approved so they can start adding it to their budget.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Kenyon, do you have any questions?
Yeah, follow-up to Commissioner Davidson's line of inquiry. So this is maybe a question for staff as well. So I'm interested in, are they letters of interest? Are they, you said that there's one that's negotiating a lease. Other than that though, do you have anything substantial that has been put into the record for co-locators?
Thank you, Commissioner Kenyon and Chairman Beck. This is Josh Leonard again. There are actually two that are in the process of negotiating a lease. AT&amp;T and Verizon are both, Verizon's a little bit ahead of the game on that one there. We're actually passing back and forth a draft lease with each side making edits. Right now, AT&amp;T's negotiating the terms of that lease. Both of those, I'm confident in saying both of those will be on this tower, given the procedural posture where those are at in their negotiations. I also know that Intermax will be on this tower and although not a national carrier, more of a niche carrier here in the area, that they will be on it. So there will be three, and based on what I know about the industry and T-Mobile and the fact that T-Mobile does need coverage in this area, T-Mobile will be on it very shortly as well. Maybe not from day one, but I mean, it's, yeah, very soon. I hate to put a timeframe on it, a year or less, but I would say that very soon, given their need in this area.
Thank you. And then just to follow up, I think you made a statement that our Planning and Zoning Commission did not have an opportunity to review the Valdez updated report. Is that correct? Is that the correct statement?
That is a correct statement. He testified, and again, Josh Leonard, he testified after reviewing the most up-to-date information. So just a little timeline of how it went. On October 3rd, we submitted a new letter with updated drive testing. We then, submitted after the October 14th hearing, I think it was, we submitted testing that had occurred the night before. Steve lives out of town and was in town the night before and did some testing. That was then set over to a November hearing and the updated information was submitted to staff, but staff didn't do a new staff report for that November hearing and so the consultant didn't receive that stuff, the updated information, until we, I actually called Leon in early November and he said he hadn't provided it because he hadn't done a new staff report. He reviewed it, the consultant reviewed it prior to that hearing, is my understanding, and he did testify briefly at that hearing. But the report that's before you, the most updated and recent report with the quotes we've been sharing, the Planning and Zoning Commission did not have that for the November 17th hearing.
Thank you. And Mr. Chair, I'd just like, at some point, to have staff clarify that as well.
Okay, staff?
Yeah, Chair, Commissioners. Josh Leonard's recount of how that played out is accurate. There was a memo provided by Mr. Leonard, almost at the exact same time that we decided to have the item tabled. And so, as a result, the final memo and the additional drive test data that Josh and his partner provided, it was ultimately provided to the P&amp;Z, but Val's, Val Technologies' updated memo didn't occur until after the P&amp;Z hearing. The idea behind that was we were going to have Mr. Valdez speak to the updated information at the hearing, which he did, so that's all on the record. And we do have Ron here with us as well to explain the three memos ultimately prepared and kind of how they have evolved since this project started. But yes, there was not, the November Val Technologies' memo that is the first item in your packet was produced after the P&amp;Z hearing, just to formalize Mr. Valdez's comments that he made at the P&amp;Z public hearing. So again, our P&amp;Z commission heard his viewpoints. A lot of the things said here, or quoted here by Mr. Leonard were on the record by Mr. Valdez and the commission still opted to deny or ultimately approve the appeal and overturn their original approval of the CU. So again, that is, the recount here by Mr. Leonard is accurate in terms of the updated memo from Val Technologies.
So the P&amp;Z did get the...
And then follow...
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, follow-up. So Leonard, or Leon, Leonard, Leon, so what you're saying is they received testimony, but not the written report, and as a staff member, can you kind of tell the commission, was there a significant gap in information that was shared verbally versus what was shown in the report that came later?
Yeah. Commissioner Kenyon, that's correct. So Val Technologies did state at the hearing that their belief now, after reviewing that information, again, I'd like Ron to give this directly versus me paraphrasing him, that there was, they do see a need for a tower in the area, they see continued growth and other things along those lines necessitating additional towers and the need for more cell coverage in the future. So yes, Val Technologies did state at that hearing that they think there is an issue in the area regarding coverage. So again, the commission was made aware of that and they opted to still deny, ultimately deny the cell tower, so.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, if I can speak to that just really briefly, I would note that although he did make some of the, or allude to some of the findings that he put in his writing, his virtual testimony was not anywhere near as direct as what's before you today in writing. And obviously, virtual testimony, as opposed to it being in black and white before you, it's far more impactful in the written form than it was virtually. Especially because at that Planning and Zoning hearing, three of the commissioners were brand-new. It was their very first ever planning, baptism by fire. It was their very first and it was clear from some of the deliberation that at least a couple of them that voted to recommend approval of the appeal didn't understand what the consultant was saying because they hadn't been here from the beginning.
Okay. Any more...
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, just a quick question, staff, do we have Mr. Valdez that's going to testify today?
Yes, Chairman, or Commissioner Kenyon, we do have Ron, we finally patched him through via WebEx, so he's ready to speak whenever you have a chance. I would probably recommend doing that before general testimony.
Sure, sure, we'll do that. I did have a couple of questions. I think you indicated that the, these higher megahertz, the telephone conversations actually go over those as well, but I think what I heard from the previous speaker was that the 750 megahertz is what is required to make a phone conversation. Is that not correct?
Steve Kennedy, the 750 megahertz carrier can do phone calls or it can do broadband, either way. It's moving data across the network in packets. So all frequency bands provide both services, whether it's a phone call, I'm dialing 911, I'm dialing public switch telephone network, or it's I'm surfing the web and downloading a website, all frequencies provide both types of services.
I don't think that was in question, that they don't. I think what was in question was the 750 megahertz is what's provided, is what, is where there's demonstration of not a lack of coverage because there is a 750 megahertz throughout a broader area. Am I not correct in that?
There, 750 megahertz, if that Verizon site comes off the air, there's still enough overlap from the other surrounding sites to provide 750 megahertz coverage within that area and not have a significant impact where it...
Well, that was the question, wasn't it?
Yes, sir. That's correct. But remember, it's also the 850, the 1900, the 2100, the 3800 megahertz.
Right. And I think it was, it was recommended or at least pointed out that the FCC counts the 750 megahertz as, is that not correct?
The original carriers, or the original frequency band that was allocated in the 80s was the 850 megahertz carrier. The 700 megahertz carrier didn't come into service, I think, until about 2000, I'm relying on memory, I apologize, 2004, 2005. That was the initial, when they talked about advanced services, marketing-wise, that was when the 750 megahertz auction happened and they actually overlaid equipment that worked in that band.
The other question I would have in regards to that is the tower that's already there, the one that you are asserting is going to be taken down, do you have any evidence that it's going to go down? Because I know you said it's a month-to-month and so forth, but... Because I know you said it's a month to month and so forth, but, and I guess that's what the, some of these recommendations are based on the fact that that one's going to be gone. Is that correct?
That's correct. And also, I can tell you that Verizon especially isn't going to put up, put antennas on this tower, on our tower, until right before that one comes offline, because it needs...
When will that one come offline?
So far, the landlord has been really patient with us. I know there was a prior application submitted for a dense, single-family residential subdivision over there at, with the City of Eagle because it's been annexed. My understanding, and Leon, correct me, I think you've probably had the most up-to-date conversations, is that that had been to hearing at Planning and Zoning and was sent back to the applicant to make some revisions, and they're retooling their application. So given that process, I would say it's probably not in the next few months, but I anticipate it being, yeah, within 2023, no question.
As I recall, the, some of the discussion we've had previous is to encourage a co-location on that app, at that site.
No can do.
Well, I'm hearing that now, but I didn't know that.
No, no, on the existing site, you mean, on the silo site?
Yeah.
No, it's structurally unsound. They don't know that even if, I mean, it would cost more than putting up a new tower to make that one safe to put any more antennas on.
Okay.
It's also only 65 feet tall, and to be able to co-locate on that with the 10-feet spacing, that would put the next highest antenna only at 55 feet, which really wouldn't provide enough of a, enough of a coverage area to warrant putting a tower.
Isn't it on a little hill, though, that kind of increases the elevation somewhat?
It's about 20 feet higher in elevation. It's on a slight hill, it is.
All right, any other questions?
Maybe one more for Josh before we go to the consultant, but could you address the City of Eagle's vote or position on this matter?
I appreciate the opportunity to that, Commissioner Davidson. Their vote on this was based on Eagle City Code, which doesn't apply based on pursuant to the Area of City Impact Agreement between the county and Eagle. My understanding is that there's, the county has tried, I mean, I don't want to exaggerate, but I would say maybe half a dozen times to get Eagle to update their Area of City Impact Agreement with no success. Their current Area of City, or excuse me, their current comprehensive plan for the area is the 2004 comprehensive plan. It was five revisions ago. They, instead of applying county code, which is what is supposed to happen under that Area of City Impact Agreement, they applied Eagle City Code, and under Eagle City Code, where towers are not, are not allowed in any residential areas, we obviously didn't qualify because this is residential. So they recommend, based on the application of their code, denial of this application. Here today, that's not the case under Eagle, under Ada County Code. We definitely meet all of the, all of the requirements and even those extended requirements under the Telecom Act for a tower and should be approved. If I can also go back, you asked, Chairman Beck, you asked a question about whether the Telecom Act only requires 750 megahertz. That, the answer to that is no. It requires carriers to be able to provide the services that are necessary to make sure that everybody has sufficient coverage, satisfactory coverage. The way, and Stevens...
Do they require sufficient satisfactory coverage for data as well as telephone service?
Yes, it's a different section of the Telecom Act, but it is, it does require that. And that's been a big push lately at the federal government with the, with the infrastructure bills that have been passed, is to extend broadband data into more rural areas. And we saw that especially when COVID shut down, when COVID shut down schools and people needed to be at home or were required to be at home, needed that broadband data even in those more rural areas.
That's currently what you have in a contract, isn't it, with this Intermax? Do they not do just broadband service and no telephone service?
They primarily do broadband internet, that's correct. Yeah, obviously Verizon, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile do both. Under the Telecom Act, if it were only 700 megahertz, it would do what's called, it would, what's the word that they use? It's not a, it would discriminate against other carriers and other bands, which is prohibited under the Telecom Act. They're not allowed to, to, local governments aren't allowed to say, well, this one's allowed and this one's not. And in this case, that 700 megahertz is the one that's the umbrella that provides the distant coverage, not the close-in coverage. So it would provide, as shown on that, on that chart, but the other ones are far less, they're far less coverage. I'd encourage you to ask your, ask your consultant about it. I'm a lawyer talking about engineering things.
Okay, well, all right. But you did, you did point out something that I do have a question about. You said that there's, the Eagle City is annexed something close by, and if they, if they do annex the area, then their code does apply and not the Ada County Code. Do you think that's going to get annexed fairly soon, or do you know?
It could. I believe it's actually even just right across, well, it's not actually right across the street, it's down the road about a third of a mile, but there is Eagle annexed, I think it's divided by a, by a prop, one property, but they've got a pretty close path to annexation. So although, but although Eagle Code would then apply for new applications, we would be vested under, under, yeah. But yeah, I don't know the timeline. There is a reasonable path to annexation of the property.
All right, okay. I don't have any other questions. Do you have, Commissioner?
Yes.
Do you have a question, Commissioner Kenyon?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So can you explain to this board, can you explain to this board why you can't build a new tower on the existing Verizon site?
The landlord won't let us. That's been approached by, both Verizon and AT&amp;T have site acquisition teams, as well as the tower company and Intermax Towers, as well as Intermax Networks. They've all tried to, tried to find other alternatives in order for a, for a site to go forward. And the reason why the consultant says this is the only viable option is that one of the things there, one of the elements that has to be met is that there has to be a willing landlord. Obviously, we're not, we can't go in and take property from anybody or put an easement through their property. It needs to be willingly given. And in this area, only one property owner was willing to lease property to us, and that's the site that we have. The other issue is, and earlier it was said that we wanted a site further to the west, that's not entirely true. We actually looked at putting a tower on the, in the power substation that's there on the corner of, what is that, Linder and Beacon, southeast corner of Beacon Light and Linder. Due to security issues, as I guess we've seen recently in the Pacific Northwest with power stations, they're not, they do not allow anybody else within their gates, so we were unable to put one there.
To follow up on Commissioner Kenyon, maybe just also, why not BLM land too?
Sure. BLM, a couple of things with BLM. As the, as your consultant put in his most recent report, it's too far away to provide the coverage to the areas that need it, even though it would sit up on a, on a hill and it could be a taller tower, it just doesn't work. I would ask you to ask your consultant that as well. He, his conclusion was that it wouldn't work based on the data that we submitted, but I'd encourage you to ask him. I'd also point out that to get fiber optics there to be able to serve the tower, we would have to cross numerous private properties. Again, we can't just go in and say we're putting an easement through. We, in this location, fiber runs right through Beacon Light Road, so it's immediately adjacent, and we can get to it really, really easily without having to go and beg landowners.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, follow up back to my original question. Do you have, is there anything in the record from the existing landlord on the Verizon Tower that you cannot build a new tower, who's not allowing you to build a new tower there?
Just our testimony on the record, Commissioner Kenyon.
Nothing from him?
No, while he's been immensely patient as we've, as we've worked our way through the process and has not required us to take down, or required Verizon, excuse me, to take down their antennas, he's also, to my knowledge, not, not been interested in, in writing anything down or giving us anything, saying that he wouldn't do it. I can just say that based on the representations of all of the site acquisition teams, to me, there's, it's just been a non-starter.
And why has it been a non-starter?
Based on the landlord's unwillingness to allow either a cell tower or to allow us to shore up the existing silo. My, it's conjecture, but my conjecture is that because he's proposing a very dense, not very dense, a dense, single-family residential development in there, it would probably be more valuable to him to use that, the property that would be used for a cell tower to sell as a lot than it would be to lease to a tower company.
But we don't have anything in writing from him?
No, no, no written evidence. The only evidence is, again, our testimony in the record.
Okay. All right. Unless there's any other questions from the Commission, thank you. And you'll begin, you will, you will both be giving a rebuttal after the testimony's over.
So Chairman, Commissioners, we do have Ron Valdez. Again, I recommend probably speaking to him prior to the general testimony.
Sure.
I'll also note that staff's presentation is Exhibit 44A, Mr. Bentley's is 45A, and Mr. Leonard's is 46A as part of the record. And yeah, we, I think we'll have Mr. Valdez able to speak to you here in just a second.
Okay.
Hey, good morning, everyone. This is Ron. Can you hear me okay?
Good morning. Yes, we can hear you fine.
Happy New Year. I've heard my name mentioned quite a bit today, so I'm, I'm pretty excited to actually talk to you guys, straight from the horse's mouth.
Okay.
All right. So I have, I have a couple topics. I'm going to simplify everything to, I know you've heard a lot from, from both sides, and this has been a very long process, but really the goal here is to simplify it so that everyone can understand both my direction and then kind of put this entire thing in context as I see it. So first of all, when I, when I first came onto this project, one of the key drivers was to see data and complete data from, from all sides. So what I mean by complete data is, you know, what's the existing coverage look like? What would the coverage look like if, if we removed the silo site, which, which is imminent? It's, it's going to be gone. There's really nothing that we can do about that. And then what would be the impact to not just the people that live close to that location, but to the general community? And again, the focus is the general community, everyone that's involved. As I look at it, when, when you decommission a tower, again, it's not just the local residents that are involved, but it's the mobility traffic that goes through the area, as well as, you know, residents that, that are on cell edge and how they're impacted. Critical communications, we talked about the Telecommunications Act and why that's important. And there's been a lot of debate, you know, whether it's, you know, voice-only, data, a mixture of both, you know, what the technology serves and why it's important. And the short answer is, is whether you're in a low-income community in Ada County or whether you're in a higher-income community where property values are higher, all wireless service is, and it's a necessity for, we use it every day. So we've also heard, you know, health impacts and all kinds of stuff. In my latest report, again, we're just looking at this from a common sense perspective. The percentage of issues that we see, and I didn't see this data from, from the appellant, clear data, was, you know, the impacts of property values and, you know, some of the other issues that were brought up, right? We need to see that data both from the appellant and applicant to state their positions. Now, as we went through this process, the applicant did a comprehensive drive test, did their due diligence on looking at other locations, and provided information showing you that number one, the models that they generated, the heat maps that they generated are, are accurate, number one, and number two, they proved empirical data of the impact of the coverage. So let's, let's talk about this, and let's, let's clear everything off the table and let's just use good old common sense. When we look, when we use good old common sense, we know the fact that we're losing a tower. And when you lose a tower, there's an impact, and so that means you're going to have to build a new one. All right, so the applicant proposed to build a new tower. Are there other areas that would be better, that are close to Beacon Light Road, that would be better locations? Absolutely. But as the applicant stated, you can't just go on somebody's land or somebody's easement and build a tower. This is the best available location that you can build a multi-carrier tower to serve not just the people that live close to that area, but the entire community, all those who travel, all those who live on the cell edge, all future residents that are going to move in. This is very critical. Infrastructure is absolutely critical. And so the data that we saw as a result from the applicant, it shows that, yes, the, what we call mid-band spectrum is impacted, and lower-band spectrum, which we call, you know, which is 700 megahertz, 800 megahertz, the lower-band stuff, it still has coverage in some of these areas. It is impacted near cell edge, and we've, we've seen data that shows that. But now, you know, now some of the pushback from, from the appellant is that, is that, you know, we can only serve, you know, low-band spectrum is good and that's all you need, and we have broadband at the home. That's not the case. Again, we have to go back to common sense. And when we look at spectrum and common sense, we know that the carriers spend billions of dollars on spectrum, and they will only deploy that spectrum, and they will only deploy 4G versus 5G, you know, versus whatever Gs you talk about, if they need that spectrum in the location. So what does that mean? That means that, yes, the low-band spectrum is used, and while low-band spectrum is there to provide a purpose, it's very limited in the bandwidth and the number of users that you can serve on low bands. It's a, it's a smaller channel. Now, in the mid-band, why it's so beneficial is that as you have the capacity, so as you start building these single-family homes, and as you have higher mobility through the area, and as you have more people making phone calls, these phone calls need that mid-band spectrum or the quality of service is non-existent. So you won't be able to make phone calls. Even though you have coverage, you will not be able to make phone calls. So all the carriers, whether we're talking about Verizon, T-Mobile, or AT&amp;T, they need to utilize that mid-band spectrum in order to provide the community a service. Now, some of the things that I did like, as I noted in my final report, was that, you know, if, if you're a carrier, you can be greedy, and you can say, yes, I want a taller tower. And a taller tower for a multi-carrier tower is great for everyone because the people that have the lowest, what we call a rad center, or the lowest height on the tower, often get the raw end of the deal, right? They don't, they're not as high, so, so they shoot into more clutter, and when you, and when you, you know, when you propagate into clutter, it attenuates quicker, and so your signal, your signal radius is not nearly as large. So the fact that they went at 100 foot tells me that they're, they're being, that they're, that they're compromising. And you know what? I probably wouldn't want to be the carrier at the lowest, at the lowest height on that tower. But, but all things said, I think that that's, that's extremely reasonable. And when we look forward, like I said, you're, you're going to have a lot more applications in the future for this area, especially as expansion goes. I mean, there's absolutely no doubt, and you're going to be fighting these same battles, and you're going to have the same people, you know, people that are moving in from out of state or whatever, buying these lands that they're, you know, that's rural and high value, and they're not going to want to see a tower. But, you know, whether you live in a low-income community or you live in a mid-income community or a high-income community, wireless service is absolutely needed. And, and I think the standard would be the same for, for all demographics, right? We talked about the BLM sites. Well, again, let's go back to common sense. If the BLM area was such a good place, you know, to provide wireless coverage, it would have been built a long time ago. As RF engineers look at the area, they're always looking for low-hanging fruit and what's easiest and is going to serve the most people with the least amount of infrastructure. When you look at the capital, the capital cost and the OpEx cost to build cell sites, that, that location has to show an NPV positive model in order to build it, meaning that when you look over the next five to seven years, you need the subscriber traffic to generate that capital spend and also the OpEx spend. generate that capital spend and also the, the OpEx spend for, for backhaul and lease and power, and also, you know, the manpower needed to, to maintain these sites. It would have been built a long time ago. And the fact that, you know, that it hasn't been built or it hasn't been brought up as a valid location, just, you know, again, this is common sense. You don't have to know how the technology works. You just have to look at it from, you know, from a, a very basic view to understand why this is important. So my final position was that I do believe the applicant provided enough data. I feel like this is a great location, given all things. I think that it's good for the future. I think that it provides just the best opportunity for the entire community. And, you know, that's, we, we can go into the details about the technology, and we can keep fighting that and saying whether we're just going to use low-band only versus mid-band, and that's, that's simply, you know, when you're sitting on this side of the fence and you know how the watch is made, you know that that's not a, a reasonable or viable option, otherwise you wouldn't buy all that spectrum, and you certainly wouldn't apply it there. So the only reason you're buying that spectrum is to use it. So yeah, so I, you know, my, my position is the applicant has done more than enough to show the need. I think they've done an excellent job compromising. It's unfortunate that some, you know, some of the local community is, you know, has the, the concerns that they do, justifiably so. When you, when you spend money on a business or a home, you certainly want to protect that area around there. That, that's reasonable. But again, this is about the general community. This is about everybody that uses these towers and the service. And I, I feel very strongly that this is a great location and a great opportunity. So, and that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have questions of our consultant by the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Could you maybe address the differences between your second report, your third report? I guess, well, essentially you amended the second report based on additional information you received. Could you talk about that?
Yeah, it was just, you know, I'm looking, in, in order to, in order to have a very clear picture, you always want the most amount of data possible. And so it was my way of pressing, you know, and saying, okay, well, let's, let's prove, let's provide more data, let's go out and provide more empirical data about the justification needed to build this, you know, to, to disprove this site or, or approve it. And, you know, I think through the due diligence, again, I mean, we can keep going through more data and more data, and, you know, is, is there certainly more data that could be collected? Yes, absolutely. But how long do we want to extend this, and at what point do we say, okay, does this make sense based on the data we have now? Or do we need, do we need to prolong this? This, and, and right now, you know, the, the bottom line is common sense. This is a great location, and so that's why, that's why, yeah, I was pretty direct in, in the last report.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So in the beginning of your testimony, you mentioned that the existing tower was coming down and it was imminent. Do you have any proof of that? And if not, would that existing site be as good or better a site if there were a new 100-foot tower on that site?
Well, it's based on the data that I have, so I don't have any proof, so just, just the input in the testimony from, from, you know, previous meetings, that, that's the only proof that I have. I have not talked to the, to the landowner. But here's, here's another way to look at that. So we know that there's a high probability that that silo site is coming down. That's why we're building this other one. But let's look at it from another perspective. We know that more carriers are going, going to need towers in that area, and they may choose that one. So let's say the silo site doesn't come down. We know based on the measurements that, that were collected in the field, that T-Mobile and AT&amp;T are definitely going to look at building in that area based on the growth that we see over the next couple of years. So either way, that, that site, I mean, you know, it's, it's going to be needed anyway for, for all the carriers. You're going to need something in that area.
Well, what I'm getting at is if the owner gave permission to build a new cell tower at 100 feet plus, or 100 feet minimum, on that location, couldn't that location also serve as a co-locator for T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, Verizon?
Yes, it could.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of our consultant from the board? Okay, hearing that, we will now proceed with public testimony. You'll have three minutes, and, trying to think where we should start here. Cheryl? State your name for the record.
My name is Cheryl Churney.
Okay.
I am a, I guess what you would call a close neighbor to where this new cell tower would be put up. I have two concerns, one of which is that it would bring my property value down. I've lived here for now for over 16 years, and we love our home. We love where we live and don't want to see that change. The second issue that I have is that I have a significant sensitive, sensitivity to electromagnetic radiation, which is the cell towers. We don't run any Wi-Fi in our home or anything wireless, and that has greatly enhanced my health. I have trouble with my health when I come into Boise, which there's an enormous amount of density here, and I struggle with that. When I go back home, it takes a while to recover. There are three factors, as I understand it, in being exposed to cell, the radiation, the electronic radiation. One is the intensity of the signal. As that raises, you have more health consequences, and those aren't really typically recognized in the, the regular medical community. You have to go outside of medicine into more of a health realm to find people that are, and scientists as well, that recognize that and are able to steer you in the right direction to find mitigation. Avoidance is the biggest factor, so you really do have to limit your exposure to this radiation in order for your body to do well. So you have the intensity of it, you have the proximity, the closer you are to the source of the radiation, the more you're going to absorb, and the more deleterious those effects are going to be. And the third factor is your length of exposure. It's one thing to have exposure periodically, and it's, it's another thing to have it 24/7, especially where you sleep, is, is an enormous deleterious factor in that. And if they're going to raise a tower higher, the exposure is going to be greater and longer and more intense. It's going to meet all three of those criteria. So I can't, I can't imagine that I'm going to be able to live there long-term. I will have to sell my home and move somewhere else, and obviously, that's not something I wish to do. So for that reason, I just request that you would carefully take a look at, at all these factors and make what you will make as a good decision. I appreciate your time and my input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Kirk.
Chair?
Yes.
I just need to state, you know, appreciate the testimony, and we're very cognizant of the, you know, the allegations of, of health issues regarding cell towers, but everything I have been shown is that it is the courts that are preventing boards like this from taking health issues into consideration, even if we wanted to. And so therefore, as part of our deliberation, we actually cannot take that into consideration. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
Okay, thank you. And I'd also ask, if you're giving your testimony, if, if your point has already been made, if you could just say, I agree, to sort of narrow it down a little bit. Okay, Kirk Miller.
My name is Kirk Miller. I reside at 3400 North Lane Wood Lane, Eagle, Idaho. I've lived at that property for going on 32 years. It bound, it is the boundary on the north of the property in question, and on the east, it's an L-shaped property. Our two properties are divided by the Dry Creek Canal. That, what they were showing this morning there is the proposed location for that tower appears to be about 75 to 100 feet from my property line. And the other day, I was sitting on the patio looking at that, trying to imagine where it'd be, and I got my rangefinder out, and it's 81 yards from my back patio to the Dry Creek Canal. Of course, there, you got to cross the canal and go onto their property, and I don't know exactly how long, but around 100 yards from my back patio. There is no place on my property that that won't be sticking up right in my face everywhere I go. It's, can't be a very good location, because when you go up on the Dry Creek Canal Bank and on their access road, it's a 20-foot to 25-foot drop-off down to the level where that would be built. So they're already building it in a hole, which has to cause them to be 100 feet tall to get anything out of it. So it will definitely affect my property values, it will affect our way of life. Like I say, I've lived there 32 years. I never dreamed that that would be the, the next thing to happen, is to put up one of those right in my, my view of the valley. So there's just no way to get away from it. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, Thomas Smith?
Hi, my name is Thomas Smith. I appreciate, I appreciate you all being here today. My address is 5600 West Beacon Light Road. For reference, my home is less than 150 yards from this proposed cell tower site, literally the first thing you'll see when walking out my front door. I've been a resident of this area my entire life. I've attended elementary school through college, living right here in this house. My grandparents purchased this property in the early 70s and raised their family on this farm. My dad bought it from my grandparents, where I was lucky enough to grow up, and after meeting my beautiful wife, Jordan, we purchased the same property from my parents. Through the recent years, I've had a front row seat to nearly all the farmland in this area being paved over and replaced with high-density neighborhoods. As troubling as that is to see, I understand that's the cost of progress, and people just want to live in this wonderful area that we call home. Since this cell tower location was first proposed over a year ago, I can't help but notice other cell towers while driving around town. I have yet to see a cell tower in a residential area with three or even four tiers of equipment on it, like what is being proposed here. The only instance that I've seen this much equipment on a single tower is out in the deserted hills off Highway 16, not surrounded by a bunch of homes. But don't take my word for it, keep your eyes peeled while you're driving around from now on. I am the proud owner of Good, of Good Life Farms. We grow clean, healthy, local, organic vegetables, and that's why people want to buy their food from us. But in a simple survey that we sent out to our customers, out of the 134 people who participated, an overwhelming 94% said they would not continue buying vegetables if grown in the wake of a cell tower. Now, as if, as if those results aren't damning enough for a small farm, let's pretend for a minute that we don't rely on paying customers to run a business. There are proven studies that show that cell towers in close proximity to beehives cause something called colony collapse disorder, the very same beehives that I have on my farm and that I'm completely reliant upon to pollinate my plants so that I'm even able to grow vegetables. It's a simple process. Plants grow flowers, and if those flowers don't get pollinated, then they won't grow into vegetables. So not only does my business crumble because my customers will no longer patronize my farm, but even the ability to grow vegetables on a vegetable farm is jeopardized. The applicants will try to convince you that the cell tower won't lower surrounding property values, that it won't do anyone any harm, and that it really isn't that bad. But I'm standing before you, telling you that this cell tower will directly impact the livelihood of my family, destroy a third-generation farm that has been in the area for over half a century, and I'm not willing to take that risk based on the assurance of a telecommunications company whose primary concern is to spend less money so they can make more. To conclude my testimony, please remind yourselves, our own city of Eagle has recommended that you deny this location for a cell tower. The previous Board of Chairmen and Commissioners recommended that you deny this location for a cell tower, and the residents of this area are recommending that you deny this location for a cell tower. This is not just a vain plea because it will be an intrusive site. This is a plea to not compromise the livelihoods of our families and to not dismiss the wants and concerns of the surrounding community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jordan Minor, or Miller?
My name's Jordan Miller, and I live at 5600 West Beacon Light Road. I'm Thomas's wife. He and I own and operate a local, all-natural vegetable farm, as you just heard. The proposed site of this tower is right outside our front door. Since you are all being urged to make a decision based on common sense here today, and if that's the guiding principle with which we're rendering a decision, how can you possibly rule with common sense that cellphone service is more critical than food, right? I'm going to present to you the argument that the applicant has done absolutely nothing whatsoever to assess the economic impact that this tower is going to have on, as Thomas said, a third-generation family farm. I would also like to argue that though the applicant affirms that this tower will benefit local residents, they've spent no time investigating whether or not this is something that local residents actually want. We're assuming things like for the good of the general public, but do the neighbors near this tower want, want it? Will they benefit from cellphone service? We have a unique base of vegetable subscribers. These people live near us, they are north of Beacon Light, they're in the homestead community, they're in Eagle Mountain Estates, and so on. To understand the true concerns of the neighboring community, we put together a survey. Here's what we hypothesized. First, the people who buy our vegetables are extremely health-conscious. They're wary of anything that perturbs natural growing methods, so we predicted that the perception surrounding cellphone towers alone would be enough to deter them from purchasing our vegetables. We also predicted that if local neighbors were actually aware of the proposed tower, that they would argue fervently against it. The first question we asked was, would you purchase and consume organic vegetables from Good Life Farms if they were grown near 100-foot cellphone tower? 94% of respondents said no. The second question we asked was, as a resident of Ada County, Idaho, which of these two options is more important to your life and livelihood? The available answers were better cellphone reception or an open rural landscape that supports organic agriculture. 98.5% of local Eagle citizens said that they would prefer an open rural landscape to better cellphone service. So let's use some common sense. Losing 94% of our subscribers because people will not eat vegetables grown in proximity to a cellphone tower will mean the end of Good Life Farms. Erecting a tower where 98.5% of local people prefer an open rural landscape will mean an active disregard for the true wants of your constituents. I am not asking you to strike down all cellphone towers in Ada County, but you have a very easy option of simply requiring this particular tower company to perform the requisite due diligence to rule out alternative locations. Were other neighbors asked if they wanted a cellphone tower? Did letters get sent out in all of that five-mile radius? This tower is not wanted by local residents. The economic burden of its proposed placement is going to devastate a third-generation family farm. This is not the definition of least intrusive means, and the commissioners of the November 17th hearing understood this.
Okay. Could you wrap it up?
Sure. It's within your power and your right to reject a cheap, lazy... Sure. It's within your power and your right to reject a cheap, lazy, it has to go somewhere approach. Please put your citizens first on this.
Thank you. Okay, Steve Barbie.
Mr. Barbie, has the presentation, let me pull it up real quick. Tower, is this the correct one?
Yes, sir. Let's call slide, the northern slides. Thank you. Commissioners, my name is Steve Barbie, 3682 North Hope Valley, Eagle, Idaho. My property is approximately 1,500 feet north of the proposed tower site. In my opinion, the appeal should be upheld, and the tower application should be denied. The information I'll share today is all public information. The first slide here that you're looking at is a screenshot of the cover of a document located on the idaho.gov website, of the Federal Communications Act versus local government control. Slide, please. This is the last page of the same document, showing that the document was published by the applicant, Mr. Leonard. Slide, please. This is page 33 of the same document. Do require a tower applicant to apply the least intrusive means test. What is the least intrusive means test? Slide, please. Here it is, FCC 18133. An applicant must show only that its proposed, proposed facilities are the least intrusive means, in light of the aesthetic or other values that the local authority seeks to serve. Slide, please. And here is page 29 of the same document. Whether the wireless service provider has provided sufficient evidence of the absence of alternatives. So we have standards here based on, one, least intrusive means, and, two, an absence of alternatives. Slide, please. On this map, the bottom arrow shows the location of the existing tower site. The right arrow shows the applicant's proposed site. The middle arrow shows an alternate possible site on five acres, and the top arrow is an alternate possible site on BLM land. Slide, please. This is the MLS listing for the five-acre site, showing that the property is available for purchase. Slide, please. The southwest portion of the five-acre alternate site is tree-lined, perfect for a monopine tower. Slide, please. This is the same view, the tree line looking north from Beacon Light Road. Slide, please. This is the Beagle Tower that Ada County approved a few years ago. Note how the monopine tower almost completely disappears when placed next to a bank of mature trees. With available camouflaging like this, clearly the five-acre alternate site would be far less intrusive than the applicant's proposed site. Slide, please. The alternate five-acre site is also about 12 feet higher than the applicant's proposed site, meaning that the tower in this location could be 10% shorter. Again, less intrusive. Slide, please. The applicant is on record as stating, "We would have liked it a little further west," regarding the ideal replacement tower location. Proper tower siding will result in the need for fewer towers overall, and fewer towers overall will again meet the standard of less intrusive. Slide, please. It can be camouflaged, it can be shorter, it will require fewer towers overall. That's less intrusive, less intrusive, and less intrusive. Both the alternate sites meet the standard of being a little further west. That's the applicant's own stated ideal. And the BLM site would also be less intrusive because a tower in this location would be further away from higher-density development, and absent any development at all on the portion where the tower can be buffered by surrounding BLM land. Slide, please. Under 47 USC, next slide, please. Yeah. Under 47 USC 33-2, Ada County does have the authority to deny the application and uphold the appeal. Slide, please. And finally, Ada County's own code protects each citizen's rights to use their property without creating undue burden upon their neighbors. The applicant has failed to identify the least intrusive means. The applicant has failed to meet the standard of providing an absence of alternatives. Approval of the tower at this time would certainly create an undue burden upon the neighbors. This tower application should be denied. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So I have a question for you. So you're, you know, you're talking about the BLM site and a five-acre alternative site. We've heard testimony that, that the BLM site wouldn't work for them. Do you know if the five-acre alternative site would sell a portion to the cell company to erect a tower? They may not want to allow a tower on there because that might hurt whatever else might go on that site.
It's my understanding that the standard is least intrusive means. It is not my understanding that the standard is most affordable for the applicant. True, the five-acre alternate site would be a more expensive option for the applicant. Nevertheless, it would be far less intrusive, and therefore should be fully considered and fully evaluated. The applicant has not done their due diligence on that matter, and therefore, the applicant has not met the standard of least intrusive, nor the standard of identifying suitable, possible alternate locations.
Do you think it's reasonable to require them to buy a five-acre site for a single tower?
I think it's reasonable to acquire the five-acre site, build a tower, then dispose of the, the balance to offset the cost. I think there is a economic study that could be done there by the applicant to determine feasible options. But again, the standard is not what's most affordable for the applicant, what's easiest for the applicant. The standard is least intrusive means, and I think it's very important that we maintain our focus on that matter.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
David DeHaas.
Mr. Barbie's presentation will be 47A in the exhibit list, just to let you know.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is David DeHaas, 1,116 South Vista, Boise, Idaho. The applicant is Intermax, is a broadband wireless provider. Intermax has no right to any wireless broadband coverage in the area, as they are providing no telecommunications service at all. And as an applicant of broadband, they are governed by the rules for information services, internet, and not telecommunications services. The FCC is where Lincoln's disclaimed over broadband internet, aka information services, and as such, you can dismiss this tower for any reason or for no reason. The applicant states that Verizon is on the current tower, and so these hearings have been discussing whether or not there's a substantial probative evidence of significant gap in coverage for outdoor telecommunications services. The two and a half years of attending hearings in other jurisdictions such as these, I find it telling that Verizon's representatives have never shown up to bolster their case for their need for this particular tower. This never happens. If Verizon wants a tower, they show up. I have seen as many as eight Verizon people at some of these meetings. With that stated, after the significant amount of due diligence by all parties, it's clear that there is, one, no significant gap in coverage for making cell calls and texting exists. The applicant will try to make the claim that they want to be able to provide all frequencies be available, but they have adequate coverage at telecommunications at 751 megahertz, and that's all that is needed. The applicant never fully vetted the BLM land to the south because it's obviously more money to move the tower south. As Commissioner Birch said in the, in the planning and zoning meeting, "This is about money, isn't it?" It will cost more money to go to the BLM site, and you heard him testify to that today, that it will cost more money to get down there. Keeping towers away from homes is important for aesthetics, health impact, it's, health impact, safety, and property values. Property value declines when towers are located near homes. Eagle Idaho has stated they are not in favor of this tower. Eagle has put in motion to wire fiber optics to carry broadband data to all homes. Fiber optics is safe, much faster, and more secure than wireless. It's a duty of this body to protect private property rights. Having a tower near an organic farm will be detrimental to its ability to keep its pollinators alive and keep its customers. I am recommending the nile of the placement of this tower. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. DeHaas? Okay, thank you. Ashley Smiley, or Smiler, Smitter? Smiley, okay.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. Ashley Smiley, 2569 North Rivington Place in Eagle. We're in the Homestead community. The appellant, Mr. Bentley, touched many of the points that I feel are significant in this hearing, and we heard from the applicants about a gap in coverage and the carriers' needs. So I'd like to bring the conversation back to the value and aesthetic of the Eagle community, to the residents and the constituents that actually live and work in this area. The folks that are applying for the cell tower, as several of the other of those opposing this have mentioned, are talking about this from a financial standpoint. They're looking at what is the most expensive, inexpensive way for them to change locations of a tower that potentially is going to be removed or taken down. And it seems that we have a lot to explore in some of the additional development that's going to be coming into the area. So we know that Ada County's had explosive growth in the past few years. I believe we can say confidently that we all care about strategic and mindful growth and development for the community. It's well-known, well-known that much of the surrounding area has already been approved for additional development, that being the Linder Road widening, a large development that's being graded and built as we speak, in what is being called a Spring Valley. And so this is north of the BLM land that we're discussing, and this has been approved and is already in the works for 7,500 homes that are going to be going in there, along with commercial development, schools, recreation, so forth. It seems that if the BLM land isn't appropriate, that maybe there's some additional space north of that, that as the Spring Valley development is going to be coming into play, we can take some time to research, you know, look at where, where is the existing coverage as it stands versus what are we needing with this additional growth that is imminent. And if we're to protect the integrity of the valley, protect the health and welfare of the community, protect property values of existing homes and those future homes that we know are going to be built, I think we need to strategically plan for, research in advance, future locations of these towers versus the cheapest, most efficient current thing available as a solution. So with that, I ask that you guys please deny the tower building. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Schapakler.
I'm, my name's Melissa Schapakera, 4425 West Azur Teal Lane, pretty close to where this is happening. I'm, I'm not going to add anything else, but I just ask that you oppose the site of this tower.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Micah Sims.
Hello, my name is Micah Sims, and I live at 5057 West Eagle Landing Court, not far from this site. And I just ask today that you guys please consider and really think about the site and oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzie Roth, Bra? Oh, Dest, okay. I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Suzie Dustin. I live at 5,300 West Flicker Lane, and my property is adjacent to the proposed site, and also adjacent to Kirk and Jan Miller's property that he mentioned earlier. We are opposed to this site for many of the reasons that you've heard well laid out by Mr. Bentley and a variety of folks. And so I'd urge you to deny this request, and ask the applicant to consider other locations. And just as a reminder on why we're talking about this particular spot, Intermax sent out contracts to a handful of neighbors in the area, offering up to $200,000 to host this site, and only one neighbor took the money, and the rest denied. It's not worth the money because of all the things that you've heard. And I actually do think, by the applicant's own admission, a tower up to 50% higher, going from 100 to 150, would provide broader coverage, and that that's more appropriate closer to 16, where there will be more commercial development. We've talked a lot about BLM land, but we haven't talked a lot, other than Mr. Bentley, about all the commercial development going in further west on Beacon Light, closer to 16. And I think that that would be more appropriate, and hasn't been fully vetted. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, could I ask you a question? So you said that the, the tower company sent out letters to all the neighbors asking if they would...
Actual contracts.
And only one accepted.
Yes.
So that makes me wonder, well, if, if only one accepted, and they did send out letters to all the neighbors, doesn't that show they did do some due diligence in trying to find any alternative sites, and that...
I would say not. This is, it's a rural area. You've seen the photos. I don't have proof of how many contracts were sent out, but it's unincorporated. There's no CCNRs. It's, it's, it's an easy location to try to get someone to take the money to host a cell tower site.
But not that easy if only one took it.
Well, I would argue differently, that of the neighbors that I talked to, it's not worth the money. That it's a principal issue, more than a financial issue, to not have this cell tower on your property. I mean, in fact, you heard a lot of the impacts, but even, you know, potential resale down the road of selling a five- or 10-acre lot with a cell tower on it. I mean, there's a lot of different reasons people have personally for not wanting a site, but the neighbors that I talked to that received the contract...
I mean, I can, I can certainly understand. Really, nobody wants the cellphone tower. And it's, we, we all agree, it's unsightly. There are other considerations. So that, to me, I mean, that does make it a lot harder for them to find an alternate location.
Right, but as the, one of the previous speakers, it's, it's not about ease, right? It's, you know, there's other options, I believe, that could be considered. We've talked about some of them, but we haven't, there has no, been no proof that a commercial site down, further down, closer to 16, at, you know, 150, 50% higher, wouldn't provide sufficient coverage. And I just don't think that they've proven that there's not other viable sites. I think this was an easy one, because someone decided, yeah, I'd rather have the money.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Hank Allen.
Yes. Happy New Years to y'all. Hank Allen, 687 West Rush Court, Eagle, Idaho. So this is about telecommunications services and/or information services. And Commissioner Beck, you asked probably the most poignant question to Mr. Leonard earlier, was, is information services protected by the Telecommunications Act? He responded, yes. I disagree with that. In 2019, there was a federal lawsuit, there was ruled on by Supreme Court, Mozilla versus the FCC. The FCC made the lawsuit, and it was ruled that information services, which is broadband or capacity issues, or anything dealing with high-speed, big volume, was now unregulated. That means it's not protected by the Telecommunications Act. FCC versus Mozilla, US Supreme Court, 2019, I think it was October 1st, okay? So, anything above basic service, which is being provided by the 751-megahertz frequency, right, that gives us phone calling and texting, is now moving over into capacity. They're going to sell it. Ron Valdez, he's lumping these things together, and he's saying, "Data and telecommunications," making a phone call, pushing them together, says, "We need a tower." We've been out there, I've taken my phone, which is a T-Mobile phone, we've taken a Verizon phone, we've done our own propagation study. We can make calls everywhere. We've taken the meters, we've provided our propagation study, showing that you can make a call. And even the applicant's study shows with a 751-megahertz, you can make a call. There's no gap in coverage. So now, what they're trying to do is move over and go, okay, we want these higher frequencies because we want broadband. That's what Intermax is, that's what everybody is. They're broadband, and they want to bring the pipe. We don't need it. So, the proper ruling for today, that the commission can make, is the probative data collected from the propagation studies, specifically the 751-megahertz band, show that there is not a significant gap in telecommunications services. Therefore, the tower is not needed, and the appeal is approved to deny the application. I can repeat that again. Want me to repeat it again?
No, that's fine.
All right, perfect. So, when it comes to information services, which is unregulated, okay, there's no guidelines. We could talk about health, we could talk about what it does to us, what it does to the environment, and we can make decisions on that broadband stuff, right? So, they put a tower 600 yards behind my house, which is two miles down the street, and within a week of the tower going on, it threw me in an A-Fib. I was in the second-story room by my, by my house. I was in the second-story room by my house. Can I give one minute to finish this up?
No, wrap it up.
Right. Went in AFib. I went in AFib 20 more times within a three-month period, hospitalized over a dozen times. I just had an ablation surgery four months ago to stop this from happening, because I was on a line between that new cell tower and the existing cell tower. I only went in AFib between 4:30 and 6 o'clock in the evening during peak cell tower hours, when this thing, when these towers are communicating to each other. So it's very important, when we're talking about broadband communication, 5G, or anything of these high I bands, that we take very, very extreme measures to make sure these things are located properly, and we have a master plan for our communities, so people don't get injured like myself. And there was also a dozen other people in my community that all had went in AFib, and also, if you look at St. Luke's, their electrocardiology department, there's...
All right, thank you.
A year and a half backlog of people that are going in AFib.
Okay, thank you.
That's only telecommunications or information services I'm talking about.
Thank you. Vivian Lockery.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. My name's Vivian Lockery, 2211 North 19th Street, Boise, Idaho. In the November 22 report by Mr. Valdez, our third-party consultant, he states that the rules for building cell towers in areas of high property value should apply to low-income areas as well, which is important to think about in this case. Regulations and requirements are made to protect all people and not just a select few with vested interest. Some of the applicant's statements, he says, were made by people that own high property values far away from the Beacon Light site. This should raise some questions about why they are part of the appeal process and why their input is relevant. I feel that Mr. Valdez's statement is unfounded. I may not live near the Beacon Light site, nor own a nearby high-value property. I'm simply a concerned citizen. I have attended all public hearings for the Suez Tower, the Star Tower, and this proposed tower. You've seen me many times. And this is to highlight the, highlight facts that industry representatives failed to address, such as when the Telecommunications Act was adopted back in 1996, Congress deliberately preserved to local governments the general authority to regulate placement of wireless facilities based on ethetics, based on other considerations you've heard today, and two, to help, I'm here to help educate local officials on wireless communication facilities because from my experience, truthfully, this is like drinking from a fire hose, and I think you've experienced that too. So although this proposed tower is in an unincorporated area, we know that the City of Eagle has updated their wireless ordinance to prohibit wireless communication facilities in all residential land use districts. These regulations most certainly protect all people within the city and not just a select few with vested interest. I doubt that the city officials made these decisions lightly. Finally, I suggest that the BLM site has not been fully vetted, and I urge you to support the appellant's appeal to deny this tower.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, we have two online, are these people online? The Leslie Decker and Eric Vello. Okay, put her on.
Hi, Commissioners, this is Leslie Decker. My address is 5505 West Flicker Lane. In the interest of time, I just would like to express my strong agreement with my neighbors. Please deny the location of this cell tower. Please agree with what the City of Eagle has already recommended and deny the cell tower location. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is Eric Vello online?
Chairman, Eric Vello's disconnected and basically stated he's opposed to the project as well and would like you to deny it. We do have a video of a testimony that has been provided, so I can, I've worked with Luke to make sure you can see that. It's a three-minute testimony.
From whom?
So let me get that fired up here real quick.
Who's the video from?
Mr. Chairman, it's a video of someone that was here that night for four hours, and then he had to go on vacation, so we provided it. And so he provided it, and I passed it along.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, let me, let me get this fired up here real quick, one sec. All right, well, we did test the volume in advance, so if it's way loud or you don't hear anything, I apologize in advance, so. And we're not hearing anything, hold on. May I ask Luke to come help with this?
IT guy.
We were playing a very idyllic rainforest scene before the hearing, and I have proof that we had video in the rooms, video and audio, so.
Definitely working. How many you got?
That's it.
You sending it, Chair?
Maybe.
Okay.
We are looking at Lot...
All right, great.
My name is JP Mahia. My wife and I currently live in the Mesa River Ranch Estates. We are looking at Lot 3 in the Heartland Ranch development to potentially build our home on. We are aware of the cell tower that would be putting in the surrounding area. We oppose putting in the cell tower. This is actually something that is going to be part of the decision factor for us if we are going to move forward with purchasing the lot and then building. So we oppose putting in that cell tower. We would hope that it wouldn't be done so that we could actually move forward with the purchase process and getting that piece of land. But that is a major factor for us, whether we will move forward with purchasing that lot or not. So we oppose it, and thank you for your time. My name is JP Mahia. My wife and I currently...
You're getting these technical savvy person here. So I will add this video as an exhibit. We'll have that as 48A, and then Mr. Dhask provided a copy of his script, his testimony. We'll add that as 49A, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other exhibits we need to add?
At this time, I don't believe so.
Okay, we have, we'll now give the, Bentley, if you would like to take a five-minute rebuttal, and then you'll have a five-minute for rebuttal as well.
Thanks again for the time. You've heard a lot about the gap in coverage. We have attorneys here who can validate that the Telecommunications Act does only protect that you can be able to make phone calls and texts, and that the 751 megahertz is plenty. I think you saw a mixed review and a little hamuda hamuda when that question was asked. You have the right to deny the tower just on that means alone, and you can validate that with your attorney. This is Intermax and broadband, they're actually the primary carrier, they want to add broadband services. This isn't even really about Verizon. But even when you look at Verizon, and thanks to the work that Commissioner Kenyon and all you did, we now have the data that shows when that tower goes down, we have coverage. And what you need to know about how coverage work, I think Mr. Valdez says, yeah, the telecommunications spend millions, no billions, in spectrum auctions, I've been part of them. But the beauty about those spectrums is they'll move up and down to whatever frequency you have available to you. So the notion that you will not be able to make a call is a non-issue, which is also provided, and I can put it as an exhibit, case law that shows that cell towers do not have the right under the Telecommunications Act for all frequencies. Hard stop, that's the first point. The second point on lease intrusive means, BLM land is more expensive, and I think Mr. Barbie said it right. It's not about easiest, it's about sometimes what's more affordable. Well, that's not, as a commissioning body, you guys have the right to enforce what's best in the community, even if that costs a little bit more money. And so BLM land, they admitted running fiber and power is a little bit more expensive, but it's better for the community. Would you also be interested to know, Commissioner Davidson, you asked Mr. Barbie about that Hartley property that's available, and if they would make that available for the cell tower? I think it's important for you to hear, in April, nine months ago, I was under contract under that property so that I could offer it up for the cell tower. And I sent an email to Mr. Leonard, we met for coffee, I came with an alternative because as you saw in the picture, the skyline of the trees would blend in, and it was a much better site in which I would lease it back and build something there. But I provided an option, and I have emails and proof that I was under contract, but I couldn't get an answer from them if they would do the work, if that's a site that they would use. And the answer I got is they didn't want to start over again. Well, that was back in April, I mean, that was nine, 10 months ago. We could be well on our way by then, and that's still much less developed there. And so that is a better site, that's exactly adjacent to the current site, it is 20 feet taller, so it wouldn't need to be as tall, and it provides more coverage to the west, where they're doing higher density losses 16. So I don't know how anyone can say that this is the best possible site or the only possible site, when there's a piece of property on the market and I offered it nine months ago in an exchange, would have been the same lease deal I would have offered them, that would have been a better spot, but they didn't want to start over. That's not lease intrusive means, and that's not smart design for our community. I feel like we're being snowballed in terms of how we're going about the process, and why, and I think this is important to note, because I think Commissioner Kenyon was getting after this, the P&amp;Z ended up denying it, not just because of gap in coverage, but because this applicant has not proved lease intrusive means. The commission, you can go back and hear it, said sending out passive letters and not following up, not knocking on doors, not doing proper diligence in BLM is not sufficient enough. Someone responding to a passive letter is not enough. And to say, well, it's better to have the one tower because we'll have four co-litigated, those are not letters of intent, those are letters of interest, I can get one of those in 20 minutes. A letter of intent is a much more formal deal, and ultimately, this commission gets to decide where you put a tower. When you put a tower, I have no doubt, you'll get all four carriers interested. The question is, what is the right location to put a tower for all four carriers? And I will tell you, this is not the right location because of where it's located from east to west, because of the height of where it is, and because it's fully exposed. It's not about just being under it, it's on the horizon where you see it from every direction, enormous, at over 100 feet. And so those are the reasons. Also, this commission asked for property value, we didn't present to here, but it's in the exhibit, that it drives property values down by 10%, and this Ada County Commissioner has an obligation to protect our property rights. And that study was on Beacon Light, that tower that Steve showed you, it was a house next to that property, which is less than, you know, two miles away, and done in 2020, December, or December of, it was January of 2020, so just two years ago. So I asked that this commission uphold what the P&amp;Z just went through, where Commissioner Kenyon, Ron Valdez spoke for 30 minutes in that hearing, you can hear it with all the data. I don't know what transpired after, where the language got a lot more direct, but he did speak, they hear, and they ruled, just 30 more seconds, Chairman Beck, if I could, they ruled in favor of upholding our appeal and denying this tower, the City of Eagle have done, and this commission has three areas of empirical evidence that you have the right to deny that would hold up in federal court, and we, as a community, if that was the case and that was the path they wanted to go, feel very confident to stand beside you and financially fund what's necessary to protect this in the spirit of what's best for Ada County. Thank you so much. Any questions?
Any questions? Do you have any questions?
I think it probably would have been good to have some discussion of this other offer you made in the, in the previous testimony, but, or the record, but to follow up on that, what, what exactly was the offer you made regarding that additional property?
I can pull up an email now, I was under contract for that piece of property, and what I offered is...
What do you mean, under contract?
So it was up for sale on the MLS. I made an offer, that offer was accepted, I paid my upfront fee, and during the diligence period, I was trying to work with, with Intermax, specifically Josh, to say, hey, does this work, can we put the tower here? And what I would offer you is the same terms as you offered Kathy McCarthy. And I put up a tower, and I'd still develop the five hours of the house, I wouldn't make as much on the house because it has a tower, we know it impacts property value, but it would be better for the community because of you could blend it in the skyline of those trees. That was the offer. It, I didn't get over...
Did your offer was accepted?
It was not accepted. That was the offer made, I didn't hear back for several weeks.
Just to clarify, your, your offer to purchase the property was accepted?
It was accepted. I was under contract, meaning I paid my earnest money of $20,000, I was under contract for $980,000 for that five-acre parcel, and during the due diligence period I had, I started conversations over here to see if that would be acceptable. I didn't want to lose that money if they weren't going to accept it, because I didn't need the extra property unless they're going to accept it. But during that period, they were not responsive. So to say that they were working with the community, there is no evidence of that whatsoever on any account.
So you're saying your, your offer to purchase the property, you made contingent on Intermax sub...
Intermax being interested in putting the cell tower there, correct.
Because they didn't want to do that, then you pulled out of...
I pulled out in time, and I have the emails to prove, hey, I need to know. I extended twice the diligence time with the seller to give me more time, and I could not get an answer out of Intermax. And I have all those emails, I can share that with you.
And that property is currently...
That property's still on the market. Now, the good news, it's not 980 now, it's like, I don't know, Steve, what is it, 825 or 780? It's gone down in value, so, you know, but that property's still on the market, so I don't know how anyone can say there's no better spot. That property is adjacent to the current site and sits higher. So, and we lost nine months, they didn't want to go down that path. Had we gone down that path, we might be done with this already.
Don't you think all the neighbors would still oppose having the tower there?
Perhaps they, they may, but the existing tower is right there already, there already is a tower there, and it better serves the community, and you saw, you can blend the topography into the trees, you could do a monopine next to trees. This proposed site, no trees, and it's 20 feet lower, and it's right on the highway where everyone gets impacted by a cell tower every day on Beacon Light. Not to mention, Beacon Light, they're going to expand that road 15 feet, that tower is going to be right on the road. I'm a bit surprised that ACHD even allows it, because it feels like it's off now, but it's going to expand to the north, right towards the tower. It's a terrible...
What is the existing tower that you say is on this five-acre property?
There's, the existing tower is across the street, it's going away. The five-acre property is an empty parcel, there's no tower, but it's across the street. And so that's where you could build a tower, the Hartley property that Mr. Barbie showed you.
And that's the one with the trees?
That's the one with the trees. It's a vacant lot. You put up the tower, you sell the fiber, you develop a house, and you, and you, and you do the same kind of lease agreement. I couldn't get an answer, like, I was willing, I met, actually, I think Josh and I met twice at Starbucks, trying to come to a conclusion. Like, I am a businessperson, I'm pro-infrastructure, I'm not, you hear, you guys have a tough job, I get it. Every day, you're having to make tough calls of people not wanting to, you know, shut down progress, that's not me. I came up with a solution, was willing to put nearly a million dollars of my own money on the line for a better solution for Ada County, I couldn't get an answer out of these guys.
Couldn't, couldn't trees, if we did grant this currents, this proposed site, couldn't trees be planted around that to...
Can't get mature trees, and it takes decades. Like, you plant, you know, 20, 30-foot-tall trees, it takes decades. What you have there is mature trees off the road and a better, further east, perfectly adjacent to the current site. You can pull up the map again if you want to look at it.
Okay. Commissioner Kenyon, do you have any questions?
Nope, not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Thanks, Josh Leonard again for the applicant.
Yes.
I'm going to renumber or reorder some of my stuff to first talk about what Mr. Bentley just brought up. First, it was a little bit misleading, this isn't just right across the street from where the other site is. In fact, the sites from the, from the current site is equidistant, equidistant, east and west, east and west, from the site. It's not closer, it's not any better. It also has trees, which are clutter. And we performed an initial study and found that it wasn't as good to provide coverage needed to the east for that site. I'd also point out that all Mr. Bentley is doing is pushing the tower to other neighbors. I'd also point out that there are more resident, there are more homes within 1,000 feet of the site he's talking about than there are within 1,000 feet of the current site. the site he's talking about than there are within 1,000 feet of the current site. What he's neglecting to mention or neglecting to state, and Commissioner Davidson brought it up, we're going to get the same objections from those people that are here. He's just pushing the tower on other neighbors. And he's frankly doing amateur engineering on behalf of the cell tower companies when they've done this engineering already and determined that this is the proposed site's the only one, as well as your own independent third-party consultant. Ms. Dustin, in her testimony, said we chose this site because it's quote-unquote "easy." I would suggest that this site has been nothing. If, I mean, it's been nowhere near easy. It's been a lot longer and more expensive site than any that I've ever worked on. I'd also note a couple of things. Mr. DeHass, Mr. Allen, and Ms. Lockery, none of them live within a couple of miles of the site, and in fact, live several miles from the site and are officers in an anti-wireless group, and that's why they're here. I strongly recommend that you not follow their amateur legal opinions and advice about the Telecom Act. Rely on what your own attorneys tell you, because they're the ones that are going to, would be needing to defend this, defend the denial. I found Mr. Barbie's testimony very interesting, and part of that is because Mr. Barbie previously sued Ada County to block the cell tower that he now says blends in well. He's fighting cell towers that affect him. That's a typical response of a neighbor, and it's not one that I begrudge. It's what we see quite a bit. It's what they're trying to do by moving the site to this other location, is put it off onto other people, other citizens of Ada County. You heard from your consultant that not only is this the least intrusive, this is the only viable option for a multi-carrier tower in this area. The only, the only viable option.
Can I just, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Go ahead. So, let me ask you. So, the previous testimony said when they offered to work with you on the additional site, your response was you didn't want to start over. You just said, though, that you did do, there was previous research done onto that site, so I guess which one is?
I never said we wanted to start, we didn't want to start over. I passed him to the Intermax Towers representative, who may have said that. I wasn't privy to those conversations. What I said was, "It doesn't work. It doesn't provide the same level of coverage." And that was the ultimate determination. It's also, aside from the willing landlord, that's the one issue. It has to meet all of the other factors. And one of those factors is, are we going to have, instead of having three homes within 1,000 feet, are we going to have seven homes within 1,000 feet? And in that case, with that tower, that was the case. There would be more people here testifying against the tower with the same exact objections. And speaking of that, these are the same objections that we've heard since the beginning. There's been no additional evidence presented by the appellant. As we've gone through the process, we've been responsive to the consultant's request for additional information above and beyond what's required in Ada County code. Denial of this application essentially is a de facto moratorium on cell towers. And the reason I say that is, this has been the most scrutinized cell tower in my memory in Ada County. We've provided more data and information than any prior application, way more than is required by Ada County code. We've identified, we've gone through and done the due diligence on not just near parcels, but also on BLM property that's a mile and a half away. And we've demonstrated, as confirmed by your independent expert, that it doesn't work, that we need this site, otherwise, there is a significant gap in coverage. Just really quickly, just to address one more point.
Yes, if you can wrap it up.
I will, for sure. The consultant did a great service to the board and to the people of Ada County. As I mentioned earlier, though, he also put the board in a quandary, because his independent analysis and expert conclusions essentially guaranteed that if this goes to federal court, we would be victorious. I don't want to go to federal court. This has already taken a year and a half. It's the kind of case that I don't want to, I don't want to be against neighbors in this area. I don't want to have to litigate that. In court, though, it's a slam dunk, and that's just based on the Federal Telecom Act. Here, it should be a slam dunk too. The question that I would pose in closing is, after hiring an independent consultant, why not follow his recommendation, which is to approve our application and allow this cell tower to be built?
Okay, any questions, Mr. Chair?
Yeah. So, on the issue which is raised, and I still, to my satisfaction, don't really know conclusively what the answer is, but whether or not broadband is subject to the Telecommunications Act and therefore those restrictions, or if it's not, which gives the board more discretion, and whether or not the Intermax application is broadband-only, or whether it encompasses other services, you know, I've seen different court cases from different jurisdictions. Maybe you could address the data versus phone--
Sure.
--issue.
And I'll just tell you from the outset that it's a bit of a red herring. And the reason I say that is because Intermax also provides voice-over-IP telephone service, which although it is technically a broadband service, is a telephone and is a telecommunications act. It is covered there. I'll also point out that Mr. Allen's comment that there was a Supreme Court case saying that that's not, that broadband isn't covered, is 100% incorrect. It wasn't a Supreme Court case. It was a District of Washington, D.C. case, and it suspended parts of an FCC order, not the entire order. It is made 100% irrelevant, however, by the fact that within a couple of months of submitting our application, we supplemented it with the fact that Verizon is a lock to go on this tower. Verizon unquestionably provides both broadband and telecommunications telephone services. I will tell you that in my legal review of the Telecommunications Act, there is no different sections, but there is no question that it covers broadband services as well. I'm also telling you, though, it's irrelevant today, because Verizon is going on this tower. This tower is for telecommunications services.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Kenyon?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
You appreciate your time.
All right. Having heard the presentation of both sides and having heard the public testimony, I will close the public hearing on application 202102816A Johnson May. Okay, now it's before the board for discussion. What is the pleasure of the board? You want to kick it off?
I thought Commissioner Kenny might kick it off.
Well, she can if she wants to. You want to kick it off, Commissioner Kenyon?
Well, sure. I can do that. For me, I think that it's probably goes back to one single factor here. And the Board of County Commissioners does not take into consideration speculation. And we make decisions based on evidence and based on facts that are submitted to us. And the fact that the original applicant did not do their due diligence in coming before this board, giving us factual information from the existing site, the owner of that site stating that they will not allow them to build improvements, whether that's a 100, 120-foot tower, whatever that may be, on the existing site, leads me to hear all other testimony is irrelevant, because we don't know that. We don't have that information. And I can't see us making a decision to build another cell tower somewhere when we don't have the fact that it can't be done on this existing site. And I feel that the original applicant has failed to provide that information to us, unfortunately. So, with that, I'm going to be leaning towards upholding the appeal and denying the tower, at least at this point.
Okay, Commissioner Davidson?
Well, I'm trying to think about all the testimony we've heard and if that specific issue was addressed, and I can't recall whether that specific point was brought up, whether or not they have an affirmative statement or any evidence regarding the initial site, whether it could be rebuilt. But, boy, it's a tough one. I mean, both sides have, I think, put in a lot of effort to bring their case. Obviously, as stated before, we're constrained to not consider the health issues, even though we might want to. We certainly have to take a look at, well, if, you know, if this goes to court, how are we going to fare in court? And it's tough to say at the moment. I mean, a lot of evidence is, I mean, if this goes to court, there's going to be quite the record to sift through. The least intrusive means test, I mean, I think that is subjective, obviously, whether or not it's reasonable to require an inordinate amount of money to buy, to purchase an additional site. How that weighs against the least intrusive means, I think that's probably a matter for the board to take into consideration as far as what's reasonable. The discussion of the alternate site on the five-acre lot, again, I think that would have been better brought up a lot earlier. I thought maybe there's something there with the offer that was made to Intermax, but we heard other testimony that they did investigate that site and found it was not suitable. Again, there's still a lot of, in my mind, the conflicting arguments about whether or not broadband is regulated at the same level as data and whether that even applies here based on the court citations that were listed. I certainly think that, you know, again, our county code is probably not sufficient to deal with all these concerns. I think the, you know, as we go forward, we should look at a revamp of our cellphone ordinance and probably engage outside counsel from an attorney that specializes in this area, because I think this lack of certainty is frustrating to both parties, both the appellant and the applicant. I mean, it should not take over a year to come to a conclusion. There should be standards that are set out that address these issues, which I think our code is deficient. The applicant has probably submitted more than any previous board has required, but one aspect of that is there's been less community interest in cell towers up till now, which is to be understood or accepted with all the new technology coming out with the 5G and the broadband and all that. So, I'm pretty conflicted on this one. Both sides have presented a lot of evidence. We do have our consultant. His report is pretty compelling as well. And--
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt, but it sounds like you're kind of on the fence there. So, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. We updated our code a couple of years ago, so I think our code does a pretty good job of laying this out. And a lot of the things that we changed were the, you had to co-locate, the ability to co-locate, and you had to go to the cities, the counties, ACHD, the federal properties, first and foremost, to see if it couldn't be cited on those properties. So, I'm not sure that our code is inadequate. I think we've done a pretty good job updating that to where we are today. I am a little bit troubled by the independent consultant's use of the word "we" when providing testimony. I thought that, in my mind, showed bias towards the original applicant, and I would just, I guess, caution this board to put a lot of weight with that independent consultant. I think that that bias came through. He used the term "we" a number of times, and again, that poses some problems for me on the independent thinking of the consultant, although I do think the data presented was probably very empirically good. I go back to, though, that everything that is said in testimony is the absence of alternatives, for example. What we're faced with here today is the potential absence of alternatives. There is not an absence of alternatives. There is a cell tower. There's a cell tower site, and we have not been given any information, relevant information or documentation, that this new cell tower couldn't go on that existing site. And I'm sticking with the grounds that this board does not do speculation. We need to have evidence presented, and that evidence was not presented, and I asked for it specifically again today, and it was not presented again. So, the fact that the applicant lacks the ability or did not want to present evidence from the existing cell tower owner or leasurer, leaves me to believe that that is still a potential option.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Mr. Davidson?
Well, I guess to speak to that point, you know, we did hear evidence that they are continuing to maintain the existing one, that they've, I guess, in the applicant's words, they've been very, I forget the exact term, but they've been willing to keep that up while this application is pending, which I suppose opens a question of why wouldn't they just continually keep it if a new one could be proposed? They seem to be willing to take the revenue on the existing one. I suppose that is a valid question, whether or not we've been presented with evidence that why a new tower cannot be built on the existing site.
All right. Mr. Kenyon, do you have anything else?
Mr. Beck, it looks like--
What's that?
I think, Mr. Beck, it looks like the ball is in your park.
Well, I will give my thoughts in it. I think I arrived at this hearing expecting that I might, depending on the evidence presented, support the Planning and Zoning Commission's vote, but then there's a lot of conflicting evidence that was presented that the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't have. And I'm wondering, and maybe we'll have to have a legal session to figure that out, but given the fact that our expertise, our expert that we hired, made the statements that he made, I don't know how that's going to work in a federal court. I wish I knew that. But I don't know how that will work, because as I recall, the last time Ada County was taken to federal court, three or four years ago, it was maybe, was it the same, was it the same expert that convinced the county to not proceed with their, to go ahead and reconsider and grant the cell tower? I don't know if that's correct or not, but, so I'm wondering about that. So, in any way, that's just my thoughts. I'll accept any kind of emotion that there is.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I don't have the proper motion here in front of me, but I'll make a stab at it, and hopefully, Leon, you can help me with this. But I'm going to make a motion that this board uphold the appeal and deny the original cell tower application based on the evidence and testimony presented here today.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that with some discussion.
Well, we will have discussion. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, so go ahead.
I'll, I guess, direct a question to staff. You know, if this is denied based on the, I guess, the main thing that is being denied, if it is denied that they did not do the due diligence on finding out if the existing tower site could be used, I mean, where does that put the process? I mean, are they able to go back, find additional information? Do we have to, and then bring it back? Or what, I guess, what would the process be?
Well, Chairman Commissioner, I'll do my best to try to answer that and not--
Well, Chairman Commissioner, I'll do my best to try to answer that and not expand the record too much, because I think we've technically tried to close it. But you certainly could table it to ask the original applicant to provide proof if it's available, that that site is going away, if that's what the board needs to make its decision. That's, you know, that would be another table. We've tabled this plenty of times in the past. You know, I think you've got an application in front of you. You've got lots of evidence that's been entered into the record. To start asking for other properties and how they might play into this, I think, gets complicated. So I guess I would just, if you have more complicated questions, that it might be worth entering into executive session with the legal team, tabling this, having that conversation, and figuring out what we want to do to move forward. But I think you've got a pretty robust record for this site in front of you right now.
Okay. So the motion is in front of us. Is there further discussion? Do you want a further discussion?
Well, I would just add that the lack of due diligence on the applicant, not only on the existing site, but also the five-acre parcel, leaves me to believe that this is not the least intrusive site. There are other options than just mentioning those two.
Okay.
So I'm going to stick with my motion.
All right. And you're going to stick with your second. All right. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Commissioner, if you could table this to a date and time, certain staff, and you do some of the five-five-type foot of our reflecting your decision here today. Or I should say, any time tonight.
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, you do have a set of findings that were passed-
We do have that here.
-from P&amp;Z, but I think you've maybe added things to those findings that probably should be reflected in the signed documents. So if we could table it to an open business meeting to sign the revised version of those findings, it might be best for us to do that.
Okay. Okay, well-
What's the table date?
17th? November 17th, open business meeting. I don't know if it's 9 or 10.
It's January 17.
January 17.
Yep.
Sorry. Did I say November?
I'll make the motion to go ahead and table. Mr. Chair, if you want to read the project number into the record, and we'll table it to January 17, 2023, to allow staff to revise the findings of that.
Okay, the application number is application 202102816A. All right. There's a motion. The one motion passed, previous motion passed, there's another motion to table this.
Second.
All right. You've heard the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. With that, we are, unless there's further business to be brought before this body, we are adjourned.